This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting for May 6, 2020. Based on Governor Baker's executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL Chapter 30A, Section 20, and signed Thursday, March 12, 2020, this planning board meeting is being held virtually using the Zoom platform. My name is Christine Graham-Allan, and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:32. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken as normal. I will now take a roll call. Board members, as you hear your name called, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and then please place yourself back on hold. Michael Burtwhistle?
Here.
Maria Chow?
Here.
Jack Jemsek?
Here.
David Levinstein?
Socially distant.
Doug Marshall? He's still not here? Okay. And Janet McGowan?
Here.
Okay.
I saw Doug.
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm that. Pam, what do you see there? I can...
I don't see everybody. Hold on.
I'm spinning down. I do not see him at this point. So if anyone notices him pop in, we'll reflect it in the minutes. Okay. Board members, if technical difficulties arise, you may need to pause temporarily to... For the problem to be rectified, and then we will continue the meeting. If you do have technical issues, please let IT, who tonight that's Sean or Pam, know. Discussion may be suspended while the technical issues are addressed, and the minutes will note if a disconnection has occurred. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your raised hand and call upon you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and at other appropriate times throughout the meeting. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. If you wish to make a comment during the public comment period, you must join the meeting via the Zoom teleconferencing link. This link is shown on the slide. Yep, it's up there. And it can be entered into a search engine by typing HTTPS, some colon backslash backslash zoom.us backslash J backslash nine seven two eight four zero five five nine zero three. This link can also be found on the...
Christine?
Yes.
I just want to let you know that Mr. Marshall has joined us.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for putting that in the minutes. Welcome, Doug. We're on the call to order here. The agenda is also located on the town website in two different places. One is through the calendar listing for this meeting, which is on the homepage, the town homepage. And find the link on the event called Event Details. A second way is to go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda link. And on that agenda document, which I think is up right now, you will see that same link that you can click on. Please indicate you wish to make a public comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself using your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes and at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If these guidelines are not complied with, or the speaker exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. Moving onward, the slide will now show the meeting agenda. Again, note the virtual meeting Zoom link. So at this time, we will move forward to item one, which is minutes, which I believe we don't have any finalized minutes. Is that true, either Pam or Chris?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item two, which is the public comment period. I'm gonna click to attendees. Hold on, I'm trying to see who's... Whoa. Hold on. Who's hand? I saw her hand go up, but there, I don't seem to... Pam, confirm. I don't see any hands up right now.
Kay Rosenthal, I just...
There we go.
I just unmuted that person.
Okay, thank you. That's probably why I couldn't see that. Okay, great. So I see a Kay Rosenthal. If you could please identify yourself and your address, and welcome, and you have three minutes on public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Ken Rosenthal. I live at 53 Sunset Avenue in Amherst, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to speak to the item that you have number 440R, not to the substance but the process. And I know how important this item will be at a time of great change in our world, our country, and our town. We have been through great change before, and we have dealt with change in many ways. Now we're going to be talking about change in zoning, among other things. And what I'm hoping that this planning board will do, and I know we'll have public hearings, but I'm hoping you'll do more than that. I'm hoping you'll have public forums to which you will be inviting specifically and generally, not only the neighbors and residents and citizens of the town, but business people, their landlords, and prospective developers, not just giving people opportunity, but specifically inviting them to come and speak, not to particular things that they want to do, but to the general developments that we expect to see in the town. These are... This is really an unprecedented time. We've been through very interesting times of change. In the 60s, we grew very rapidly, but we knew what direction that was going to be. We don't know about direction now. We don't know how the colleges and university are going to change. I don't know what the business community is going to be like. Nor do we know how people are going to behave, how they are going to spend their time at home. And I'm speaking of a time when we do not have a coronavirus to deal with. We still now will have that problem with us too. So here is my hope. My hope is that the way you will proceed is very deliberately, not in a hearing format in which you ask people to speak to you, but people to speak with each other in ways that give us a chance to have interchange and conversation about where we all think we may be going. I hope these will be multiple forums, and I hope you will take your time to do it. And I thank you for listening to me this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see one other hand. Do you see that, Pam? I've held a Greenbaum.
Greenbaum.
Okay. Welcome, Hilda Greenbaum, or whoever it is. Please identify.
It's me.
Hi!
Hi, I just have a quick question, and that's to ask if you will be accepting questions or comments from the public after the consultants have given their report tonight?
I believe we will, Chris.
Okay.
Yes, we will.
Because it makes more sense to do it than no. Thank you.
Okay. Pam, I don't see other, any other hands. Is that correct?
I see one more. Konstantin.
Up there. Okay, great. You're... Thank you. Whoops, it's flicking around here. So Konstantin, please identify yourself and your address.
Yes, Konstantin Plashakov. I'm sorry, I joined the meeting a bit late. Did you have a chance to talk about the pandemic COVID-19? No?
We don't have that on our agenda tonight.
You know, but we're talking about the playground.
Oh, the playground. That will be on next after this. We'll be opening the public hearing. If you have a question about that, I suggest you wait till we finish with that, and then we'll have a public comment period.
Thank you.
Konstantin, can you tell me your street address, please?
It's 289 Triangle Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands right now. So we will proceed to item three, Public Hearing Site Plan Review. And I will open the public hearing. We did have this come to our last meeting, but that was sort of more of an informational presentation. At this time, we're actually going to open a public hearing for the Kendrick Park Playground. So... All right, so six, it was for 6:35. It's actually 6:42. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR 2020-07, Town of Amherst, East Pleasant Street, Kendrick Park Playground. Requested to, for our approval to construct a playground, walkways, seating areas, and other site improvements for a public park under Section 3.335 of the zoning bylaw map 11C-244 RG Zoning District. The first thing I will ask, are there any board disclosures or conflicts? I don't see any hands. That's what I'm watching for. Click your hand if you do. I don't see any. So we will move to item three, which is the applicant's presentation. I want to just ask Chris Bestrop, is there any introduction or a statement you want to make before we introduce the consultants?
This presentation will be made by Nate Malloy, who's a senior planner in the planning department, about the Kendrick Park Playground. We did not hire a consultant for this project because we have such a good DPW staff, and they were able to do, to work with us on the design. So Nate, I believe, is here, and he can go ahead and give the presentation.
Great. Welcome, Nate. And Nate has, I assume there's some slides that will be going up. And I believe, Pam, you have those, or Nate will be handling his own.
I think we have, we both have them. Nate, what would you... Oh, wait a minute.
I can share my screen. That's fine.
I think that you should, because I don't see them right here. Okay.
Sure, it's... Can everyone see that? This is, hi, this is Nate, senior planner. This is, you know, this is cover sheet one that was submitted with the application. The, you know, the town, we presented this on the 15th of April. We went to the Design Review Board on April 22 as well and received comments. Then we're planning to go back in May to the Design Review Board. And since our presentation on the 15th, there's been a number of comments submitted online through the online comment form and just through email and notes to staff. So we've, we've met as a team a few times, and I'll just say that the plan that's here has been changed. So, you know, the north part of the play area, and I'll get into that. But, you know, there's been a lot of comments and suggestions, and the design team has been taking them seriously in terms of, you know, accessibility, integration of natural features, and, you know, trying to create really, you know, a nice walkable path system. So the, you know, I'll walk through what Paul Deathier, the towns, one of the towns engineers has prepared, and then I have additional slides to show. You know, we did start off with existing condition survey. So we do have, you know, we had a consultant survey the entirety of Kendrick Park, including the topography. And so, you know, that was important for us just to know utilities, trees, curb edge and everything. So we have that for our guidance. And, you know, just quickly on this plan here, this is kind of the central area of Kendrick Park, the middle, and there's some topography here. The play area is north of that, where it levels out. So this is the area envisioned in 2011 where the amphitheater would be, and we're up above that in elevation. So, you know, we're sticking with the general area that was proposed in 2011. And, you know, we're trying to work with the trees and the existing topography. If we look at sheet three, it's, there is a lot to see. I guess the main thing is there's an existing driveway and hard pack here off East Pleasant Street on the east side, where, you know, there is some, you know, there's a curb cut. And we're proposing to use, you know, have a walkway here, the main play area, and then, you know, work with the topography to have this east-west connection that slopes south. The, you know, within this, this play area, there will be, you know, some excavation. We're trying not to impact the tree's roots. So, you know, every surface needs a base material. And so, you know, we've been talking about what's the least amount of material we need to excavate or scrape off to have, to have, you know, either, you know, walkways, or, you know, if the agility area is over here, to have, you know, a wood fiber base. And then, you know, in the play area here with a rubberized surface, what does that mean? And so the design really responded to what would be the drip line of all the existing trees and try to position, you know, the areas that would require the most excavation and earthwork to be outside of what's considered, you know, the, you know, the do not work area within the tree drip line.
Nate, can I interrupt you? Chris, Chris Bestrop had her hand raised, although now I see it's down. Oh, no, it's back up.
Sure, Chris, do you have a comment, or would you?
Christine recognizes me. I just wanted to make a...
Oh, heaven, yes, you're recognized.
So I just wanted to make an introductory statement about the origin of this. We do have a design from, for those of you who did not attend the April 15th meeting and don't really know much about this project. We did an overall design of the project back in 2011. And recently Nate applied for, the town applied for a grant, a park grant. And we received $400,000 in the park grant to build a playground in Kendrick Park, which was part of the original plan. And then we went to the town council and received another $260,000 worth of CPAC money. So I just wanted to, you know, let people know that who hadn't been participating in previous discussions about this, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Nate.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, so to, you know, to continue what Chris had said, you know, the park grant we've mentioned before wants to have the plans finalized by June 1 and bidding this summer with construction to start in the fall and a deadline of completion by June 1 next year. And as far as I understand, those deadlines have not been extended. The, you know, the town, we've met with a few vendors, and, you know, we're getting, we're trying to move things along, but it is actually a little slower, you know, having to work remotely. So we've asked the state about the deadline and about extending the deadline. So anyways, back to this. So really, this, you know, this design here tries to respond to, you know, existing trees that the tree warden, Ellen Snow, and public works and staff thought were healthy enough and could withstand work around them, and also topography. And, you know, it's, as you can see, it's not right on North Pleasant Street. So there is some topography, you know, the site does have a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a hill here on the North Pleasant Street side. So we're pulling it a little bit away, both because there's existing trees and things that need to be moved. And if ever North Pleasant Street gets rearranged in terms of parking or traffic flow, you know, this design would not be impacted. As we move north, I'm just indicating, even though the design will have changed slightly up here, the limit of work is pretty similar. So again, this area opens up, and there's not many existing trees. And so, you know, all the walkways, it still needs some excavation, but we're outside of the drip line of trees, and we're, you know, trying to create, you know, walkable paths. So this is the demolition and site preparation plan. Sheet four here, the, you know, layout and materials. The, this general area, if you can follow my cursor, this east-west walkway, this play area, and this sitting area, none of this, you know, this all remains pretty much the same as we've seen it. There's an agility area over here to the, to the north. And then, you know, there's the amphitheater area, and again, accessible walkways. And so, you know, this has changed a little bit, but the idea is still to have a continuous loop of walkways and have them be accessible. So this, this walkway east-west will be, will be, will be blacktop, will be asphalt. It's meant to be paved in the winter, so that's why they want hard material. It will have benches along it, and it'll have, you know, a number of lampposts along it. So this will become something that's maintained year-round. The rest of the walkways in, you know, the park itself will not be maintained in the winter, so there won't be plowed. And this whole big area right here in this play area, this is where there'll be manufactured equipment, and it'll be a rubberized surface. And, you know, that, that's necessary for accessibility and for fall safe area. The sitting area over here will be surrounded by a stone wall, a granite wall, and it will be stamped. I forget what we decided. I think it's maybe stamped asphalt or permeable paving here with, you know, similar tables as shown. The idea is that this will be, you know, a different texture material, but it will all be, you know, accessible surface. The, the walkways up north of here, throughout the rest of the play area, we're looking at doing permeable paving, and then maybe as an alternate doing asphalt paving. So depending on price, we're going to seek both. But the idea would, you know, we'd really like the idea of having some permeable paving here. You know, there's benches throughout the play area that will be, you know, a painted aluminum. There'll be a granite curb, at least a six to eight inch granite curb on some areas around the pollinator garden and along this edge. We're looking at using boulders and other hardscape material too, both as things to play on, and then also to form an edge and a barrier in certain areas. You know, in the amphitheater area will be Goshen Stone with granite and stone sitting that's in the hillside. Up, up in this area now, we're looking at having a circular area with peystone and maybe some granite boulders. It's not shown here, but in lieu of a sandbox, we're going to have basically like a peystone area with rocks around it. The agility area shown here with some, some vertical logs will be, the area will be extended, but that'll be an area that has, you know, logs that are on the ground and slightly raised. They'll be staked into the ground. There'll be vertical logs that'll then also be, you know, in steps or in different patterns. There'll be different sized rocks, and it'll all be in an area with wood fiber ground cover. So it's not wood chips. It's actually a, you know, a material that is, meets a safety standard. So, you know, this area will be considered the more of the natural play area that leads into this Goshen Stone, you know, end up connecting through here. There'll still be the walkway, but it'll be backed up to here with, you know, the Goshen Stone amphitheater and stone steps, and, you know, a number of benches throughout. So we're really looking at an integration of material, both, you know, surface material and then, you know, vertical elements, whether it's natural rock, cut granite, and logs. I'm not sure if there's any questions at this point, or keep going. So sheet five, grading and drainage. The, the idea here is, again, I'll start with this east-west walkway. You know, it's, this is, all of this is considered a walkway. It's not, it's not a ramp. So, you know, there's no railings necessary. In this area right here, this is the central drainage area. So there'll be under drains, under the play area, and under this area that come to a, I'm not sure if it'll be a catch basin, but just a depression, you know, and then it connects into the, into the town's drainage system. But this is also going to be, this will be an overflow, and the thought here is this is a drainage swale that will be planted. So it's, we're trying to have it be a slight rain garden. So, you know, most of the material, it's, it's all going to be sheet flow off of this. It's just only one and a half percent, up to a 2% cross slope on the playground. And it's all sheet flow that'll, you know, go off the paved areas and go into the mulch beds on the sides, or it'll come through the under drains into this area, and then, you know, go through the swale here to the overflow structure here. So, you know, this is intended to be an accessible walkway. All this has, you know, would meet ADA standards for cross slope and, you know, longitudinal slope. The, you know, so we're really here, if you follow this, I'll just show an example. These contour lines show, you know, there's, there is some grading up to create this sway on the side, but we're really trying to minimize how much we're deviating from the existing topography as much as we can along the walkways. You know, we'll feather it out to the existing, but we're not trying to bring up the grade much. The, the big difference here is that this hill is no longer part of the plan. It was brought up a few times with the planning board men, asked about it. And then one of the vendors asked about the utility and accessibility of, of the sloped walkway in the hillside. And so this essentially will still be here, but it'll be at grade. So all these existing topography lines you see won't be here. The walkway will still be above grade a bit, but not, you know, not three or four feet. So we're thinking, you know, two feet at most above the existing grade, so there'll be less fill. But this, you know, this is still, you know, if you just take off these two outside contour lines, you know, the rest of this is still the way it would look essentially. So we're, you know, we're going to be raising everything up a bit in the play area. For one, you know, one reason is to, you know, we have this subbase material we need to put in. So we're excavating a little bit, and then we're filling a little bit. So we're trying to balance the cut and fill. So everything will be, and to get the right slopes for drainage. So everything is going to be raised up a little bit, but not, not too high. You know, most, some of these walkways will eventually be, essentially end up being at grade. So on this edge, there'll, there won't be a curb, you know, there'll be a planting bed and mulch on this side. So, you know, the grade will just meet up with these exterior walkways on the east side. On the west side, there'll be a curb with plantings behind it, but this curb really is also helping to, you know, retain some earth. You know, it's actually helping to create an edge against what is, you know, sloped, a sloped backdrop against the walkway. Are there any questions about the grading or the?
Nate, I see that Chris Bestrop has her hand up. She must have something she wants to add.
Hey, Chris.
I apologize. I didn't mean to have my hand raised.
Okay. Nate, if you're at a stopping point, our next...
We have a few more sheets. I was just going to go through them, and then I have a, I have a presentation with some precedent images just to help, I think, clarify and a few things.
Doug Marshall has his hand raised.
Okay.
Okay.
So I recognize Doug.
Yeah, I had two questions. One is whether there's any expectation that at some point in the future, there would be a sidewalk along the east side of North Pleasant Street? And if that happens, whether it would require any rework of any part of this design? And the second question is, you talked about a fair amount of permeable pavers, and I wondered whether that is driven by some sort of stormwater consideration? Or what the reason for the more expensive paving material is rather than some sort of imper, or impermeable paving?
Sure. The, you know, we pulled this design away from North Pleasant Street with the assumption that if there was a sidewalk, you know, this wouldn't have, this would not be, would not need to be moved or disturbed. So, you know, the 2011 plans did show the curb edge coming east a little bit for nose and parking. There's, there's been different ideas of what's happening along this edge of North Pleasant Street. But the design, and even this walkway to the south here, is pulled in a little bit. So if there is any need to bring the curb in, this design won't be impacted. In terms of the permeable pavers, I guess I can be a little more clear. We're actually looking at doing like a, for the, the north walkways, I'll call them, if it's permeable paving, it's not actually pavers. It's, it's a poured-in-place permeable pave pavement. So it actually would come, you know, there's different types. They actually come in bags, and it's, it's an aggregate that you form, and you put you, you know, they pour it in place. And it's just the way the aggregate works, it creates gaps to let water in. So it's not as if this would be, these walkways would be, you know, brick on a, on a base and loose pavers. It would actually be a continuous surface that would be permeable. So whether it's permeable asphalt or permeable, we're looking at, you know, some other materials. It would be that, and the way we've, the way we're thinking about structuring the bid would be that there'd be an alternate for it, so that if it, if it is a lot more costly, we could... So that if it, if it is a lot more costly, we could decide not to do it, but we'd still, you know, we've been told that the price per. Whether it's a, you know, linear yard or linear foot is not much more than um paving it with with asphalt with blacktop. And I think it would actually be less expensive than concrete, so we're, you know, we're doing it both for, you know. Um could be for cost, but it's also really to keep the rainwater on site and something just to, you know, less, having a less, you know, a less asphalt um in the park. If we're.
Yep, go ahead Nate.
Sure, this is the lighting plan and conduit plan. What, you know, so right now at Kendrick Park, you know, there's utility boxes on the perimeter, uh there's no lighting or, you know, conduit on the interior. For um for electrical and there's no water in Kendrick Park either, so there's no um. You know, we're not proposing right now to bring in water, we've discussed whether or not we maybe get a hydrant, but this, that may not, that's not part of this project right now. What is part of the project though is running conduit along the walkway and actually having, you know, pole lights along this this main walkway. And then running conduit up through the play area. Um and have it end at a um. You know, at a um at an at grade box, so it'd be a subsurface box, the top would be at grade. And we just stub out a number of conduit points for um possible future lighting. So that lighting isn't proposed at this time, but you know, while the the area is. Um being excavated and prepared for construction, we would just run conduit to likely spots if we wanted to have. You know, lighting come up one side of the the play area and even for other lighting opposite the play area, so. Um you know, the only thing that would be happening is, you know, five light poles along the east-west walkway. And they would be the um acorn lights that are downtown now. Um you know, they'd be on a concrete base and they're the the black um wrought iron. And you know, they would. I'll say they're temporary, but the idea would be that they, you know, would illuminate the path and if, when. When there's um a decision about future lighting for Kendrick Park and even this area of downtown, if there's new pedestrian style lighting. Uh we would swap out the light poles, so the light poles are something that the town's going to provide. Um and be able to, you know, get this path illuminated. That's, that's the lighting. Now, these are just details, um you know, like. You know, they're standard construction details, just but just to show that, you know, everything has a subbase and material, so you know, we're looking at, you know. You know, there's a depth to everything, so um you know, the wood fiber in the agility area. Is at a minimum of eight inches of wood fiber with the can be on a subbase or on a hard, you know, on a. On the existing material, so I mean, there's anywhere from eight inches to a foot of material even in the natural area. And you know, with the walkways too, again, there's, you know, um anywhere from a foot to fifteen inches of. Material that would go um beneath the surface of the walkway, so um you know, something that we've been considering. Uh more details. Um I think what I'll show now is just some, some images of what what we're considering for um. For site furnishings and different precedent images, so. Um you know, do more is we've, the town uses this uh this vendor for different furnishings, so these are, these are actually the benches at Groff. We would probably not use the, it's not, they're not black, but we like this style, so it's all aluminum as opposed to recycled plastic. Idea would be the benches would be on tubes as opposed to a big concrete slab. Um and there's different styles of benches, some with backs and without backs, so you could sit different ways and face different areas of the park. Um but these are the styles of benches we're looking at. For the, for the tables in the circular sitting area, it'd be something very similar to this. Uh and then for an accessible um table, you know, there'd be one without a fourth chair, so this is a one, a one-piece table and chair set. That could, you know, can be bolted or can be left um um. Within the site enough, you know, it's it's quite heavy, uh the trash cans would match what is in downtown and they could be. Both half, uh you know, half recycling and half um trash or can be one or the other. Um I think that's hasn't been decided. In terms of stones, we're looking at, you know, both, you know, um kind of not, I want to say rough or natural stone and then, you know. A more finished stone in some areas, so it'll be, it'd be a mix of different stone materials. You know, here's peystone, so if there's some, there's some areas with peystone, so this just shows, you know, what. What we're considering in terms of the different stone material. And even, you know, how it would be placed, it was placed on an asphalt walkway, you know, we were considering having a number of these blocks around. And something that could be used for play or for sitting. Uh you know, here's a typical wall that we'd have perhaps around the amphitheater and other parts of the park. The um. One thing that has changed in the north part of the park, instead of, we're still thinking about having grass mounds, but not as high as what the. You know, we had originally proposed at five and a half feet with a slide. The slide actually wasn't as big as we would want, um so we're still considering having grass mounds, and so here's some images. Showing what that would look like in a play area, this is synthetic turf, which we're not proposing in Washington Square Park. These are um, these are other images from another um from a learning, learning park. But just to give a sense for what we've been considering in terms of how, how it would work in Kendrick Park, uh again, with natural stone. These following images are from Pulaski Park, and so, you know, they just took um. The city actually provided the timbers here, it was white oak and black locusts and they were um, you know, anchored into the ground. Um with two, you know, with with rebar or threaded rod that went two feet deep, but these, you know, this is a a synthetic wood. Wood mulch material, wood fiber material and these logs are then um, you know, through fastened all the way through the ground. Through these connection points um to keep stable. Here's an image of it here, and again, here are these vertical logs, so we, we're considering doing something very similar in our agility area with vertical logs. And so these logs are um equal depth buried to exposed, so if it's a two-foot log, a foot is exposed and a foot is buried. And there's no, you know, it's not set in concrete or anything, it's just um into, you know, almost augured into the ground, and so we were, you know. We're considering something similar to that. For the play area, we are still, you know, considering doing um using manufactured equipment, and so this is an image. That we showed before and it um, you know, staff is gonna talk to the vendor about. Um you know, refining this a little bit, but you know, in terms of what we like, this is an accessible spinner. So more than one person can um get on it, it's at grade and it it spins. And so we're gonna keep that, we do like the idea of having climbing structures and slides and different elevations of play, so this would be. For older uh five to twelve-year-olds, and this is two to five-year-olds with other, you know, individual play equipment. Um in the playground, so we're looking at having, you know, three or four bigger structures and then small, a few. Other elements, but it, you know, it's really targeted from to the two to five and five to twelve-year-old. And the following images are just showing different views of that. That same design, so there's, you know, different climbers, you could have some music makers, a number of slides. Um you know, and we're also looking at a few different types of roof structures, so I don't think we're gonna um. Have necessarily a um, you know, canvas or a seasonal shade structure that we have on, you know, at some playgrounds. We, we're trying them at Groff, they're actually might be pretty difficult to manipulate, get on and off, but. The vendors do offer different types of perforated material, uh sometimes as a canopy above these. Um the play area is in an area that does get a lot of sun, and so we've been considering having, you know, whether it's a metal, um some areas of metal perforated roof. Just to provide, you know, some type of shade um midday in the summer. And that's, that's um, I'm gonna have an, show one more thing. Um so that's, those are all the technical documents, the other piece I've mentioned is um. You know, here is the two thousand eleven schematic and we're still staying within this general area. Uh what's changed really is um, the plan we were looking at was something similar to this, where there was a slide and a walkway. And there had been, you know, a sandbox. What the new design that we're really leaning toward is something along these these lines, so. Instead of having the hill up here, these walkways are mostly at grade, as I mentioned, a little elevated, but within this area are grass mounds. Similar to what we saw in the picture, so these would be, you know, raised grass mounds with, you know, an accessible walkway all around. This over here in the gray is the peystone area, and then this is the amphitheater area. The agility area would get extended and have more options, maybe even possibly a sandbox here, but the idea would be to extend the agility area to connect into the. The amphitheater area. You know, that's something that came to light with all the comments. Um and also talking with the vendors about, you know, the. The cost and the utility of the, what was considered the hillside slide, it actually wasn't. You know, the slide was only gonna be four feet, maybe six feet at most, and it would be above grade. And you need to have it on posts with synthetic surface underneath as a fall safe zone, so. You know, if you see pictures online and you envision, I'm not sure why, but. You can go online and see some really cool hillside slides built into the hillside, and that's not what the vendors were offering and. Uh you know, if the play equipment has a number of slides, they're gonna be taller and better than what we could have had here, so that was a twenty thousand dollar item. That maybe was not worth the um, both the grading and, you know, the cost of equipment, so. You know, we still wanna have some grass mounds here and have different types of play here, um you know, uh planting beds, benches and seating around. Uh there'll be a a seating nook here, keeping this at grade also allows for possible um. Connections when the park gets expanded, so you know, you could have a a path come off the north or even through here and connect again, so. The, the ability of making future pedestrian connections is easier on this plan because there's, there's not as much um topographic change. I think I, I'll stop there.
Thank you Nate. That was great, uh at this point, we're gonna move to the site visit report that happened uh this week. Um and then I'll uh move on to questions from the board, um I believe Michael volunteered.
To.
So yesterday, um five of us were at the um, at the site. Observing uh the uh, what were the changes in plans as well as the uh old, the older uh structured plans. Uh particularly noticed the uh, the, the two major trees that need to be uh removed, uh both. Uh large and both uh. Uh aged, um whether or not they're uh viable without uh. Without the playground being built or not, I don't know, but uh in in any event, it was clear that uh. There would be plenty of uh tree cover remaining even with the two trees that would be removed. Uh we also located the site uh relative to the Cross Streets, Bacclellan and to the uh. Buildings uh across East Pleasant. And um that was about it.
Thank you. Um at this time, I will move to uh questions from the board, so um I'll be watching for your hands. And I'll try to call you in order. Okay, so I recognize Doug and then Michael will be next.
Yeah, I wondered what the life expectancy of the elements of the park are and what. Impact this would have on the annual operating budget of the town, whether there's a lot of maintenance. Uh expenses that'll be part of an annual outlay, thank you.
Okay, Nate, do you want to answer that?
No, no, um.
Okay, do you want?
I will, the um, you know, we've, when um, I'll start with the last one with the annual maintenance costs, it's something that. You know, we've, staff has spoken with um, you know, the different departments, planning, leisure services and public works. Right now, the, you know, the annual budget for maintenance is not a lot, and so when we. Have upgraded um, you know, Mill River, the Mill River Fields, and now that we're doing Groff, you know, we've always said that we need to increase our operating and maintenance budget. So, you know, we had um. Um a a sod company come in and worked with Amherst Baseball on the Little League fields. And you know, when we told them the, the operating budget for maintaining the grass, we almost didn't want to put new grass in. Because he's like, how are you gonna maintain it when, you know, you have such a a small budget, so. I I do think that there, you know, there'll be some extra costs, I mean, the town maintains Kendrick Park now, so you know, it mows it and maintains it now. Um you know, the, in terms of maintenance, there won't be, uh you know, there'll still be maintenance here, um it'll just be a little different, so I'm not, you know, I don't think we've done a. Calculated a specific amount of new maintenance, but you know, there will be less mowing, but maybe there'll be more raking in terms of mulch beds or other things, so. Um there'll be an increased cost. Um for life expectancy of materials, you know, the play equipment, gosh, even the rubberized surface, they say twenty to twenty-five years. You know, I, you just, you, you know, I mean, um there is some maintenance on those as well, you know, the rocks and other surfaces, I mean, they're. You know, again, you know, everyone says twenty plus years, so we're, you know, we're anticipating, at least for the. For the foreseeable future, if this were built, you know, not a lot of um capital costs or maintenance on the materials, you know. You know, after twenty-five years, that could be reevaluated in terms of what, you know, what needs to happen, so sometimes the rubberized surface, the surface is good. But the cushioning underneath needs to be um um improved, so you can actually inject underneath the rubberized surface to keep, get the. You know, the fall safe protection again, um if we do use permeable paving, that needs to be cleaned annually or. Or at some point, you know, it needs to be cleaned. But we're, you know, so all the natural materials, the stone walls, the sitting, the rock walls and benches, I mean, we're anticipating that to need minimal maintenance. In the long term.
Uh thank you, I'm gonna recognize Chris Bestrop before Michael, she might have something to add.
Thank you, Christine, I wanted to uh note that two of the members of our design team um work for the Department of Public Works. Um Paul Deathier is an engineer and landscape architect who works for the DPW. And um Alan Snow is the tree warden and Alan is in charge of um a lot of the maintenance of parks, including. Uh maintenance of plant material and grass and all of that, so, so they were part of this discussion from the very beginning and. In fact, you know, helped us to choose materials with an eye towards um lower maintenance. And that's one of the reasons why we've chosen to go in the direction of um. A manufactured play equipment for the larger play area, uh in addition to accessibility and um safety factors. We also find that that type of material is, requires less maintenance than some of the. Um materials that are actually natural materials which can deteriorate more rapidly over time, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Chris. Um at this time, I'll recognize Michael and then uh next will be Janet.
Yeah, just a brief question about the the mounds in the uh north part of the, of the area. Um I love, I love the idea of uh grass mounds, uh are they gonna be kept at the same uh mowing height? As the rest of the grass in the area or will they be uh shaggier?
Nate.
Yeah, I, my thought is they would be kept um maybe not as short as um the surrounding area, but I, I hadn't envisioned them becoming shaggy. You know, maybe um, you know, three, three inches or four inches, depending, you know, it depends on how much use they get to, you know, the idea here would be that. We're considering putting sod down and actually have it be a really pretty thick, you know, kind of um. Material, you know, a sod material that can withstand heavy traffic, but then it would, it would be uh maintained. Um I can't, you know, I can't answer exactly how how that was envisioned, I was thinking that would be, you know, maybe kept a little longer than some of the other surrounding grass, but not shaggy. That's some, a good question though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I recognize Janet.
Um thank you for this presentation, I have questions about the maintenance, um I, I, I'm. You know, how often do the wood chips have to be kind of adjusted or cleaned? Um like, who will be maintaining the garden, weeding it, and what's the source of water to plant it, to um water it? And then the planting beds, um you know, the mounds look like they'd have to be hand mowed. Um and the eating areas in the playground itself be cleaned pretty regularly, and so I just wondered like, is that gonna be a daily thing, a weekly thing? Um it does seem to take up, you know, it's, it looks like a really interesting and fun playground, but it seems like if it, if it has a lot of use. It's gonna need cleaning and watering and clipping and weeding and all those kind of tedious things of life.
Yeah, I think the uh, that's a good question, the um, yeah, as it is now with, with Alan and his crew and other public works, they, you know, they open all the parks daily. And they do a sweep of the parks in terms of picking up trash. Um you know, so there's a daily, there's a daily um, you know, opening and cleaning in terms of the more in-depth, say, weeding or things, I mean, I. You know, my thought is that uh at least, you know, weekly, we'd want to have the wood chips um in the, in the, in the agility area raked and um. You know, make sure that they're being maintained. Um we've discussed how the pollinator garden and other areas would be. Um, we discussed how the pollinator garden and other areas would be watered and maintained. So you know, there's the the garden club in town, but you know, we've also looked at whether, you know, right now, Public Works is um between Alan and Paul, they are looking at different plant varieties that you know, are hardier and don't need as much um as much maintenance. So I think that is a good point. Um, you know, and we're still looking at some of the exact the exact details of that. So for instance, on the western side of the park right here, I mean, we're showing plants here, but we're thinking, you know, uh, you know, uh, ground covers and shrubs and things that can be planted that you know, necessarily, once they're established, they don't really need uh much maintenance. You know, they might need an annual pruning. And maybe, you know, uh weeding once or twice um a season, but you know, they won't need any weekly maintenance. I agree that some of the flowering areas um may need a little bit more, and that's something we we have discussed and we haven't um you know, we've thrown out um different ideas in terms of how that would work. But right now, it's trying to look at different perennials or plants that are hardier, that can withstand, you know, even droughts or, you know, different changes in temperature.
Is there a water source for the plants, the gardens?
So, you know, the discussion was to um, when this is uh constructed to have, you know, we we're discussing whether or not we could um, you know, run a hose from a um from a fire hydrant or get a watering truck that would come by um a few times a week. So um, long term, you know, the discussion was how how to bring water to the site and you know, it's on the street so that, you know, one thought was to um you know, we haven't figured that out yet, actually. Um, you know, it was to have a hydrant, but then how to hook up to that with a temporary meter possibly.
Um, the other question I had was about safety. And so in my experience, when you have small children and medium sized and large children, they move and kick balls. And so my concern is that kids will be kicking balls into the street and chasing after them. And so is there any thought to how that could be blocked? Like the ball and and the kid?
Well, the the um, you know, so right, you know, along North Pleasant, there is this natural barrier. So you know, there's going to be a curb along this whole edge with plantings and rocks. You know, in this area, there's um again, some planting beds, and then there'll be the agility area. The um, you know, just the other weekend, um, last weekend, Kendrick Park was packed with families and kids running around. And right now, there are no barriers. And there hasn't been necessarily a perceived safety issue. Um, you know, the thought is, you know, uh along North Pleasant, there is this natural barrier. And on this edge, you know, we've talked about increasing the number of benches. So doubling up the benches, having more seating that can act as a barrier and have more eyes on kids. But you know, at this time, we're not proposing a fence, whether it's here or along East Pleasant Street.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty quiet park. I mean, you know, and and fortunately for the packed park last weekend, there's hardly any traffic, but usually there's a fair amount of traffic moving through there at different, you know, at rush hour times of day. And it's been a very quiet, lovely, passive park, and we're trying to get kids to come and play and families be there. So I just want to highlight that as a a concern.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, at this time, I want to recognize Jack.
Oh, so Janet, quickly, would you have more concerns about or about about North Pleasant and East Pleasant, or is there one um that would be a higher priority?
Well, I I think there's more traffic on East Pleasant, but you know, and anytime you think of someone, some small kid chasing a ball where there are parked cars into a street, I think you have to worry. So North Pleasant would, I mean, I would just worry, but I, you know, obviously, East Pleasant has more traffic. You know, North Pleasant has less. Um, I cut through that street a lot to avoid the traffic circle and things like that. I don't know. But I think, you know, you're you're trying to draw people into use the park and traffic is always increasing. So I don't know, I just, I, you know, somebody who wrote in had suggested plantings, a thorny hedge, which sounded possibly cruel but effective. And so I just wondered if there's an idea of that, like where balls can go and where kids can go. So but it sounds like you are thinking of that too, though.
Yeah, we, you know, I don't think, I mean, like I said, on this side, we're really thinking this will develop into a really a vegetative hedge. Um, without thorns, but you know, the thorns could uh, that would definitely be a deterrent.
Thorns pop balls.
That would end the ball.
Um, and I just want to uh on the fence part, I think Nate brought up a good point about how there are no fences now and people come and play ball and frisbee and such. And we're only focused on one part of the park. Um, again, if Nate or whoever's in, if you put that twenty eleven or the existing site uh plan up. You know, it shows you that we're just talking about one little area. I mean, there's still a lot of open space that kids could be playing with. So it's sort of hard sometimes, I think, to draw a line. You know, we'd have to think about where that fence, you know, goes. Um, because it's this, it there's still kind of a bit of an open field um to the north part, right? Nate, you know, a past the
There is it. There'll be this, you know, this area will remain open and, you know, this whole area will remain as it is in its current condition. So there are some big areas. I think it's interesting. I mean, um, you know, we had talked about even for the North Common having not, you know, like small fences like you'd see in New York City in certain parks, both to keep people on the walkway and then also to try to you know, direct traffic, but maybe for safety. And um, in terms of fencing, you know, I Christine, I I I think, yeah, if they, once if this starts becoming implemented, you know, a consideration for how the whole park can work with different types of barriers would be really important. So could there be a, you know, if you did need a fence here, you know, is there a way then to carry it through the whole design of the park?
Yeah, like those really expensive gorgeous wrought iron ones they used to put up like a hundred years ago. That would be beautiful. I'm going to recognize Jack again. He's been very patient.
Oh, yeah. And I actually, my question was on fencing as well. Um, um. You know, I think I think the park, I I was there at the site visit, but um, it looks extremely interesting and fun. For families and things like that, more of like a boutique kind of park. But I just noticed the the narrowness of Kendrick Park between North Pleasant and East Pleasant. And so, I mean, I just know how, well, I've had, you know, kids as well, but uh I'm not putting a ball under my argument, but I knew, I know kids is they they just run off. You know, from their parents, especially if there's, you know, the family has more than one kid. And then that kid kind of just goes, and this is going to be a magnet for families with, you know, lots of kids. So I also bring up the fencing uh issue because I'm really concerned about the safety uh on East Pleasant Street. And I I feel like it, you know, all this, all this stuff is going to energize kids. And what we see now and what people are doing now in Kendrick Park doesn't apply to how, you know, people are going to be enjoying, you know, this new park at all. It's going to be a different population. So that was my comment on on the, I I I feel like there should be some fencing. It sounds like that could be accommodated, you know, later on. As a fix, I guess. So and then and then uh I have a second question, and then it's a little bit uh odd, but I'm I'm wondering about you know, the this Kendrick Park used to have all these homes there, and I know water and sewer, they're provided with water sewer. So I know all that is uh readily made by, and I also know that probably a restroom is very controversial. Um, maintenance issues and all that, but I was wondering if uh Nate or uh Chris could speak to what do we have for public restrooms right now? It just uh just seems like um, and and it doesn't even apply to this, I guess necessarily, but um, for me, it seems like, huh, that that's something that's lacking. Um, and I don't, I did, I wonder what others think uh about that.
Yeah, the um, you know, restrooms aren't part of this project. Um, it has been mentioned a a number of times. You know, in terms of public restrooms, there's the Bang Center, which I think may be the closest in terms of a public facility. You know, uh, there's the Jones Library, um Town Hall and the Police Station. The um, I'm not sure how open the uh fi- central fire station is, uh but those are the public buildings. Um, you know, there has been some discussions about what you know, could a private restroom or facility building, uh would they open up to the public? Um, and that's something that, you know, could um can be researched a little bit more, but um, you know, right now, there are no restrooms planned for this for this facility. And you know, there's also Community Field up Triangle Street uh two that's open. Um.
Yeah.
But yeah, there are, there are none uh right now planned, you know, um.
Nate, give us an idea of how much it costs, like, you know, because I assume that's why you're not considering it right now. Uh, how much would it cost to put a standard, you know, bathroom building um in this area?
Yeah, it's interesting. The um, you know, I guess it's like, you know, for some conservation areas and recreation areas, we've looked at getting um prefabricated or like modular restrooms. So they'd be, you know, uh, um, maybe have two um two uh accessible unisex bathrooms and it comes in a building, a modular setup that you connect. Um, you know, you depending on how you want to do it, whether it's to a a town water and sewer or if it's to um you know, whether it's compostable or not, the um, but you know, even that, you know, the prices are a hundred and fifty thousand for material, and then you're talking about installation and utility connections. And so, you know, I would think that having putting, and then if you want, you know, if you want to be um, you know, decorative or have a certain aesthetic or, you know, what we did at Community Field, we renovated Community Field Restrooms a few years ago, actually. And we had everything be automated. So all the lights are censored, water is censored, toilets are censored. And you know, it's a center block building, and I think that renovation was um like a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, it was quite a bit. And I was shocked at how much it cost, but you know, to get some, you know, sturdy fixtures and to really uh, you know, improve the building. So I, you know, I think the cost would be two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand for restrooms. Um, and then there's the maintenance issue. It's outside the budget. I mean, I, you know, I I couldn't be wrong. I mean, there could be other, you know, solutions, but you know, as a public construction project. And then, you know, how, you know, where is it in the park? How big is it? You know, is it seasonal? Is it, is there a water heater? So sometimes if you have, you need hot water for the sinks. So it is a number of considerations. So it's usually not just just the restroom. You know, usually you have to bring electricity in. You need a utility closet.
Can that, so would that be like another grant or something, you know, a phase two of this park or because you're talking about maybe lights, maybe water, maybe the, you know, so you have like a hundred right now, six sixty. You're trying to best utilize that kind of money and then there'd be like a phase two?
I can't speak to if restrooms would be a later phase. I think, you know, staff has heard it, and so it'd be a discussion in terms of how how would it fit into the park. You know, to the overall budget and in the location there. You know, in terms of the the lighting, you know, my thought is the lighting we're saying would be just right now is to run, you know, as if we're looking at this plan here, we're going to have lights along this walkway, and then we're running conduit up. So if we ever have this connection, lighting could just run up this way, you know, it's not the same plan. But you know, we have these interior um lighting. You know, in terms of water too, we're thinking about having water somewhere here for the playground, but um, you know, restroom is a much bigger discussion in terms of its overall aesthetic and location in the park.
I'm gonna recognize Chris Bestrop. I think she has something to add.
I was just going to say that the um, the bid and the chamber have been having conversations with the town about the issue of public restrooms. So it is really a larger topic and um, you know, we we are serious about addressing it, but um this project, you know, can't accommodate it. But um, you know, we hear you that um, there should be some sort of public restroom up in this vicinity of the downtown, and whether it ends up in Kendrick Park or someplace else, um, you know, will have to be considered. But um, you know, with within our budget and our scope of work, it's not really something that we can accommodate as part of this project.
Um, I actually have a question. Um, Nate, if you could, or whoever's starving, could put up one that shows the circular seating area with the tables?
So here's this area right here.
Yeah, great, thanks. Um, so my concern right now is um, the the furniture that's been picked is, um, we have a picture of it in our packet. It's the, well, usually four seats attached, but to make it for handicap um ADA, you can remove one of the seats. Um, so that's actually only three seats and three seats. Um, you know, so if a family of five, you can get kids to try to scooch and share on a thing. But I just wanted to ask the question I automatically thought about what I had done with my family of five. And sometimes the attached picnic table with benches are nice, but then I realized that that area we're talking about, if it's um, the scale, I believe, is one inch to uh uh ten feet. That area is really small. It's really only about eight by maybe max twelve feet and and even at that in the circle. Could that area, was there any thought about making it a little bigger, maybe fitting a third table? You know, it's very small because then I looked, there's no other tables, there's lots of benches, but that's really the only seating area.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. The idea is that this, you know, this would act as a seating wall around it. So you, you know, although it's not a table, you'd have some more seating. And at the most recent meeting, we've discussed, you know, eliminating this kind of flower bed area so that that you know, would just be um, this whole area would just be a one, a paved surface without this this flower area. Um, so maybe with, you know, eliminating this, you could get three tables in there. Um, you know, we can take your comments back to the team and, you know, see if this could be made just a little bit bigger to accommodate an extra table or two.
Yeah, it was just, you got the play equipment right there and, you know, very often mothers, you know, have maybe three kids or it's two moms and a combo of four or five. I knew I was in that a lot. And you know, it's snack time or lunchtime, you're making it a multi-hour event to go down there. And um, I just, so adding to that, the strollers, it's maybe it's good if you move that flower bed, but it's a real pinch point and you get three or four strollers in there with, if you were to try to stick a third table, it just seems for all the land that's there, it just seems very pinched. So I would appreciate if people could go back and rethink that a little.
All right.
Uh, I'm going to recognize Maria.
Um, let's see, what was it? I think uh overall, the activities, you know, are similar to what we saw in the past and it looks great. Um, I think the only sheet that shows in its context pretty well is the cover sheet, unfortunately. And so I'm hoping it's placed accurately, but it shows sort of the design in blue relative to East and North Pleasant Streets. And um.
Off that one up.
Is that?
It's, see, it was on the set that was in our packet, which is, I know outdated, but at least the sidewalk is sort of relevant to um, the spoke, I think, bar or
Yeah, it was right here.
Across the street. Um, so I'm just wondering if any more consideration about, you know, uh how it connects to the rest of the town. I know that, you know, in the future, East Pleasant Street side might change, but um as far as that sidewalk on the west and where it hits McClellan and I guess that little perpendicular bit being sort of, oh, sorry, it's not pulled up yet. It's probably part of.
If you have the first page, Nate, from our handout, the like it was the cover sheet.
Yes, the the only one where it really shows it sort of.
The buildings across the street, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so it's not this one. I don't have it handy. Pam, would you have that available?
We had it up.
You did, Nate. It was the very first sheet you had up.
Isn't it this right here? Can see, can everyone see what I'm sharing now?
No.
Oh, sorry, you know what? Sorry, new share, sorry. I had it on my screen and um. All right, yeah, yeah, sorry. I I was looking at it. Um.
You gotta really share, Nate.
Yeah, not good at sharing. So, yeah, it it looks like the east side hits um East Pleasant in a place that's sort of no man's land right now, but that's all right, because you know, something might change on the east. Um, I think the only bus stop is in front of the People's Bank, right? That that's further.
It's down here.
And so um, I'm just curious, like, why on the west you have such a long sidewalk proposed? And then I guess that's like a little crosswalk that you have that's um headed toward the words where you have McClellan, McKellen Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that just so like when people come from downtown, they cross over versus on the east side or, you know, like, yeah, just sort of contextually, what was the idea behind all that pedestrian way on the west and then?
Right, I think the, you know, so there's a new sidewalk here along East Pleasant Street. So there's, you know, one or two crosswalks here further south that isn't, oh, I guess, not quite shown. So people could cross and walk up here and then have a direct connection.
Yep.
In terms of down to McCullin, right through here is where um the Tan Brook passes through Kendrick Park. And so originally, you know, the thought was like, okay, let's let's put a crossing right almost directly across, but then you're at a mid-block. And it's so the 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 idea right now is to, you know, um, if you brought down to McCullin, um, Public Works is talking about having um, whether this be a whole raised cross intersection now with a a larger raised crosswalk for traffic calming. And then uh, there's some utilities right here. There's a um sewer and manhole um and drainage, both sewer and drainage infrastructure that you you have to avoid. So you know, that's why it's coming to the south of the McCullin Street. It's really trying to avoid any any You know, that's why it's coming to the south of the McClellan Street, it's really trying to avoid any, any possibility of, of um, running into Tan Brook, so. You know, that, I, I, I understand that, it's kind of a, the dog leg that comes quite far south, but. I hope in reality, it, you know, it's an easy connection for people walking, um, you know, they can, you know, be at a, you know, an act, you know, at a cross street, they can cross and come up.
Right, cause in the winter, that is the only place that will be plowed as far as.
See, this whole walkway will be plowed. And it's, it, this, this topography also allows um, for this shape, there's quite a bit of topography right here. Shape coming like this allows it to be a sloped walkway and not a ramp, or it doesn't need stairs, so. There will be some fill brought in here, but I guess essentially this will be, um, you know, uh, an accessible walkway. If we came straight off here, this is quite steep right where the cursor is, and so if the, if the, if the walkway came straight, there'd be a number of stairs. And then we'd still need to have an accessible route, so this, you know, tries to satisfy it with one design.
Okay, right, thanks.
Nate, is there still talk of turning, because DPW is involved in this uh, North Pleasant Street, making it a one-way?
That hasn't been a part of the discussion, I mean, we've, we've discussed, we've mentioned what's happening long-term, but that, there hasn't been any real discussion on that. I think um, you know, in the two thousand eleven plan, they showed, you know, angled parking right in here. And making this one-way, and so I think all those things are still, you know, under consideration, I don't, I don't really know what the long-term plan is.
I'm gonna uh, recognize um Janet, and then Michael will be next.
Um, so Nate, I have a question um, prompted by what Maria was saying, is, if people are coming from the north. Or across the street um, of East Pleasant, where, you know, all the buildings are right now and probably future buildings. Is there gonna be a raised crosswalk towards the entrance, like first, how would people from the north come? Would they be across the street, or I think there's a sidewalk running along the park, right?
There is, and then there's, there's a crosswalk right here. So you know, if you are on the other side, you can cross here and then it's not too far down, and then there's this new sidewalk all along the north.
Is there top, is there thinking about raising that crosswalk to sort of slow traffic down and? Give people a chance to get across?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but I'll make a note of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Nate, could you um, switch to that uh, twenty eleven plan again? Janet's question made me think, uh, thank you, yes, you know, in that one, there was, so I'm thinking about. People walking not north, like from the campus way, like how I would walk down that way. You know, there it shows some very graceful sidewalks that could bring you down into the park, um, but at this point. It looks like in the new design, they would have to walk all the way down to McClellan and get into it that way.
You're right, so yeah, right now, there's no existing sidewalk on the west side of Kendrick Park, and so just in terms of, you know, not having. If we show this, you know, keeping this at grade allows for a connection. But you know, there isn't money in the budget to then create a sidewalk that goes all the way up to this intersection, so that, that is really outside the scope of the play area. Um, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're allowing for that connection in the future, but not, not at this time.
So can you add that to phase two?
If they do, it's interesting, for someone coming north, you know, they, right now, the sidewalk does not, you know, it really follows the perimeter, the curve edge, and it would come around here, so someone would have to. You know, walk around the north and then the east, you know, or they, right, could come down North Pleasant and then come up a bit, um, those are the two sidewalks.
Okay, thanks, I'm gonna recognize Michael.
There, um, going back to the cover sheet that you showed a minute ago, I'm, another question about that same sidewalk. The, uh, this, there's the suggestion that the park would be uh, closed at, at, from dusk to dawn. Uh, that it wouldn't be available at that point, and so if there's no fencing, uh, clearly, closing it is, is uh. A, a matter of public perception rather than about, rather than patrolling, but would you, would you imagine that that sidewalk from the cut, connects McClellan Street? And uh, ends up on East Pleasant uh, would be available and usable during the evening hours or not?
Uh, good question, I um. I would assume, I would assume yes, you know, that we're providing, um, you know, pedestrian level lighting there. You know, and to your point about the playground, you know, it's interesting, at one point, we talked about would we have. Um, you know, ballers at either entrance here, not that you chain it off, but you could have some signs, I would say, close at dusk, I think that um. My, I envisioned that the, the, you know, the sidewalk here would be illuminated and used, you know, in the evening. Um, I'm sure that's going to your point of when, how is the park closed?
Yeah, but thank you.
I recognize David.
Thank you.
And then Chris, you're next.
Thanks, Nate, and for the rest of the team for putting together this proposal that's trying to maximize state funding. I, I, I just, I mean, that's be to contrain, it's, in my mind, it's not that li- large a park. And it's not that large a play area, um, and so minimizing the, the um, added paving. Or um, and, and I, I, I think is, is, is an asset rather than a detriment. Because the more, we're talking about adding walkways, I think that from the north side, people will be, if they, they can walk across the field. That's remains, which is nice, or they can walk on the neighboring, the, the adjacent uh, uh sidewalks on the streets. Where their cars maybe were like way far, so I, I think that that's actually an, uh, an, an asset to the, the, the current design or the current view. Um, rather than uh, uh, anything else, and so I, I, I applaud minimizing the um. Added mecatom, I think that, I think that's pretty much it, thank you.
Thanks, Chris Bestrop.
Hello, um, so we have heard from um, the DPW, and I think this was a, a comment that the um. Superintendent Guilford Moore made, that if we put up a sign that said the playground is closed from dusk to dawn. And we alerted the police to that um, fact, that they would drive by, and if they saw people, you know, playing there or. Doing things that weren't appropriate or whatever, students going through there at night, that they would um, tell them that the playground is closed. And they can't be in the playground, I don't think that will apply to the path that goes across it. Because people do use that, you know, to get from the neighborhoods to the west of Kendrick Park, over to uh, the stores and the um. Buildings and bus and bike share on the east side of Kendrick Park, so I have the feeling that the walkway would still be open. But um, as long as there's a sign up to clue the police in and, and we let them know that we don't want people there after dark. They will uh, patrol it and um, try to keep people out of there.
Thanks, Chris, I see no more hands up right now for board members, so I was going to move it to public comments. Um, so I'm looking at, we have twenty-eight attendees right now on Zoom. And I will ask them to raise their hand if they have a question about um, the park. I see, I see two hands right now, um, so I will recognize you. Um, or at least what I see on the screen, so please introduce yourself and uh, where you reside. And then ask your question, I, and I see three hands now, so I'll start with um, Dorothy Pam. So unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Oh, yep.
I did it.
Give it up, good, okay, so Dorothy, are you there, Dorothy? Dorothy, do you um, do you hear us?
Is that noise gonna go away?
Now, we have backfeed, if you, do you have something?
Telephone perhaps, is your telephone close by?
Yes. But I, I don't remember where I wrote the number down, oh. Um, I have a phone. Okay, I wrote the numbers down, let me see if I can find them.
You, do you want me to come back to you, Dorothy, in a few minutes? I'll come back to you, I'll go to the other two people and I'll come back, okay? Thanks. Mister uh, Pleschovskov. Are you there? I think uh, Pam, is he unmuted?
He will be.
Hello, I'm, oh, yeah, Constantin Leshkov, yeah, I can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, welcome.
Uh, yes, great, thank you.
And if you could uh, say your address again and then ask your question.
Uh, two eighty-nine Triangle Street, just north of the, of Kendrick Park. I'm uh, very interested to know, uh, did the current COVID nineteen pandemic. Influence your planning in the past few weeks. I understand that this is a project with a history started in two thousand and eleven, clearly that was a different time. So now we are under statewide lockdown. And health experts tell us that it's likely that the situation will continue for a year or maybe two. So my questions are, number one. Uh, did you think about the most effective way to shut down the area? In case there is an emergency situation as it's now. Putting up signs will possibly, you know, work on families. But definitely not on uh, young people who will be also using the, you know, the area on their own. So I really, you know, I'm, you know, I'm really asking you to think about the fence. I know that it's not ideal, but it would, if there's a fence and the. Location could be physically put under lockdown if necessary. That would do a lot for public safety of the, for, for the health of the community. And number two, uh, do you, you know, did you have, you know, time to figure out the protocols for disinfecting? The area daily, I understand that the earliest it will open will be. Uh, summer next year, but chances are that uh, the situation with the pandemic will not get. Uh, you know, completely resolved, or there may be another way. So when we think about maintenance, I think we're also looking at the necessity for daily maintenance. Uh, disinfecting the surfaces, right, particularly it's a playground, heats, right? So um, those are my uh, two questions, so I would be really grateful if you could address them.
Uh, thank you, um, Nate, do you wanna answer that? I, and I, just part of it is we have other parks in town, how is that? Is there a plan how that's gonna be handled? Nate? Is Nate still with us? Or Chris, do you wanna answer that? Maybe Nate's not listening.
So um.
I, I realize I was muted, sorry, Chris and everyone.
So let Nate have a chance.
My um, my computer was chiming, so I, I, I wasn't sure, I think I was getting emails, but anyway, so the um. Yeah, uh, thanks for your comments, the, uh, as I say, that I was saying that the town takes, you know, safety of its residents and visitors very seriously, I've, I, you know, I think they've done a commendable job. You know, in terms of, uh, Christine, you mentioned the other parks, I mean, the town went, you know, closed its uh, public um, parks. In an effort to, you know, stop social gatherings and then also to ease maintenance, so, you know, if this park um. Were constructed at this time, again, it would be, you know, a patrol issue, but, you know, all public parks in an emergency like this would just be closed. We wouldn't allow, you know, them to be open. Because, you know, the, I, I do think the daily disinfecting is something that we haven't discussed, and, you know, I think the easier solution is not to. Is to close them, because that's, that's the safest measure, the um. I understand people will still come, you know, I read what in Sweden where they spread chicken manure in the park to, to deter the, uh, basically like the May Day celebration. I, but yeah, I, I mean, so I think, you know, we haven't discussed that directly, um. Same with, uh, you know, also to like the fence or how, what's the effective way if there's another emergency? You know, we're not necessarily designing this park with an eye toward um, you know. Having to keep users cer- a certain distance, I mean, if this were open, people, there's plenty of space for people to, you know, have social distancing occur. Um, you know, if there was another health emergency like this, my thought is the town would close public spaces and, and make it pretty apparent that it's not to be used. You know, I don't, I can't say, you know, what, what are the measures the town would use at that time, I mean, if people continue to use it, you know, would it be? You know, more patrols in this area, would it be putting up temporary fencing, you know, chain link fencing, like construction fencing, I mean, those are things we haven't really discussed.
Thank you, I'm gonna move to Hilda Greenbaum, I believe you are able to speak.
Uh, yeah.
I can hear you now, please introduce yourself and ask.
Hilda Greenbaum, uh, two ninety-eight Montague Road, North Amherst. I have a question about the sidewalks and whether they would be tricycle and baby carriage. Easily, uh, not necessarily accessible, but pushable, and that's emanating from my many years of pushing grandchildren around. Especially Amity Street, when I, when I look at the number of tree roots that have. Made pushing a carriage up Amity Street next to impossible, that I see there are a lot of trees planted. Or bushes, it's hard to tell, planted very close to the walking paths here, whether you're gonna have the same. Kinds of upheaval of the pavement that we suffer on Amity Street, so. I just wanted to make sure that people were thinking about that when they plan the plantings along the sidewalks.
Thank you.
And so the, you know, the sidewalks are, you know, we're building them, you know, five to six feet wide, so they are, you know, wide enough, they will be a, a smooth. Surface so that they could be used by, you know, different, whether it's toys or assisted devices. The, uh, for tree roots, you know, what the towns done in some areas, and you know, it, it um. Um, you know, it's the freezing and thawing and other things that happen along tree roots that, you know, sometimes they lose themselves that heat the sidewalk, so. A lot of it goes into the subbase material, if you, you know, the towns tried different methods with um, you know, different um, gravel or subbase material that has. Um, you know, voids in them to allow, you know, things to expand or move, so, um, you know. Like Chris had mentioned, we're working with Public Works on this design, both a tree warden and an engineer. Um, so my assumption is they've designed the, the walkways and the, you know, the subbase materials in a way that it would allow for. Both the roots to survive and then also to um, you know, any, to remediate any heaving, you know, to, you know. And that could be also just, you know, more scoring patterns and joints on a sidewalk, so. You know, concrete wool or asphalt sometimes can break, but if you have um, control joints and expansion joints, so there's a few ways to plan for that, I'm not, you know, I, we haven't. That hasn't been talked about, um.
Well, as long as you're aware that there is that problem in Amherst. Aware, made aware, a lot of people make you aware.
No, that, that's good, thanks, I, that's something we can bring back.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go back to uh, Dorothy, I do not see your hand up, but I'll give you this moment, you are unmuted if you. Want to speak.
I think she has her self-muted, I have her unmute, unmute.
If she's listening, um, if not, I'll try one more time, I see one more hand. I see um, Kathy Shuen, Shuen.
Kathy Shane.
Shane, that's right, I was like, it's not like how it looks, Shane, Kathy Shane, um, she, uh, you're allowed to speak now?
Okay, now she should be.
Okay, Kathy, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, um, I'm Kathy Shane, I live at five nineteen Montague Road, and I think, you know, I'm also on the town council, but I'm speaking as a resident. Um, I just, um, I wanna uh, echo what I think David Levinstein said is. in this case, trying to minimize the cost and minimize the amount of paving and other things we put in this is important, um, rather than maximize the grant even. Cause I, I think the issue of us maintaining, um, you can look around our other parks and see what happens to equipment, not mention just the grass. So I do have a question about the rubberized surface and I can see how big it has to be, and it partly has to be as big as it is because the amount of equipment that's on it. So potentially less equipment would mean less rubberized surface, and it's so expensive to put in that even if it has a 20-year lifetime, if it costs $200,000, we may not replace it, given the way Amherst does it. So just those two are interactive. Then on the table, I'm wondering whether it may be that it's just more expensive, but, um, when you look at a central park and some of the parks that have playground or play area, they put in stone tables where there's a stone top on a stone pedestal and they're, they've been there forever. Um, and the table I saw with the four attached chairs is that aluminum. And is there a way to think a little bit more creatively about tables? Cause I do think tables are important, even if they're small. People sit down at them. It's a nice place to gather, um, and talk with people. And then the last is if, is there, I think there's still a sand lot in the, when I was looking this afternoon. And, um, keeping the sand clean is with the one time we lived near a playground that had sand and when we lived in DC, the one place that was completely destroyed was the sandlot because pets, pets had gone in it. There was debris in it, um, cigarette butts and other things in it. So just thinking in terms of sand doesn't necessarily stay clean and you want it to stay clean. So it's, the whole theme is around maintenance. That's it. Nate?
The, um, no, I, I think those are good points. You know, um, we are, we are talking to, um, you know, one, uh, a stone, uh, manufacturer and distributor to get costs on items. So we could, um, ask about tables. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that, um, you know, a stone table would be more expensive than a, than the aluminum, but you never know. Um, so we can look at that. And they have been different ideas for different types of tables. Um, yeah, the sand, it's interesting. We, there's still maybe a sand area and we talked about maintenance. So we've also suggested, uh, maybe if, um, you know, there's a peystone area and we thought about if the sand was to go away, it would just be peace that we, um, have peystone instead of sand. It's a little, it's different, but it's still tactile and kids can play and dig in it. Um, hopefully it's, you know, not as much of a maintenance issue. So I, I, I understand. I hear that about the sand. I haven't, um, you know, I, I just, I'll take note of that.
Cats don't like the peystone as much as the sand. Um, I think that was, um, so I'm gonna go back to Dorothy Pam and if you can try to, thanks Pam.
I believe she is unmuted.
Yes, can, can you hear me now?
Dorothy, Amherst Media, um, sent me a message and said to remind folks that they need to turn their telephone down, the volume, um, their speakers down and TVs down before they speak, if you have either of those going.
Hey, is that better? I turned the volume down. I'm on my computer. I tried the phone. The phone does not let one in. I pu- I typed in the meeting ID number and then it asked me for my personal ID. And all that it was said in the directions was type, um, what was it? Space nine. I did that and it wouldn't accept me in. So the telephone does not work.
Okay.
So I'm ready to, I just ask a simple question about the tables with the attached chairs. If one were wanting to do some social distancing, you could not do so with those four attached chairs. Now, I understand why movable chairs might be a problem, but let's just say that you're a grandparent wanting to watch your grandchildren, but we're still in a half kind of social distancing world. So maybe there could be some permanent individual chairs, like, like, like a stone chair that is not so close to other things. I mean, I, I realize this is in contradiction to Christine's point, which was good, which you wanted a space for a, a group of mothers and children to eat lunch while playing. But the attached four chairs did seem to present a problem to me. Uh, the other issue is for price reasons, you have decided to not do the natural materials for the play structure. But the pictured equipment was my most hated color, beige gray plastic color. So I know that the public at one of the meetings I went to didn't want it to be those bright, too many bright pri- primary colors. But what about making the equipment just that old fashioned, dark playground green? And then it would blend in with the trees and I think that would look a lot better. But basically, I'm very excited about the park and I hope it will be built soon and I hope that we will come up with a fundraising process to build a beautiful restroom at the tip, cause there's no way that children that I know could ever make it to any of the bathrooms you listed without wetting their pants. So I do think we need a, a restroom at some point. That's it. It was Pam. Thank you. Um, wow, my head's turning. Um.
Yeah, I like, you know, I like the idea about, you know, movable chairs and everyone, you know, a lot of tacos into that. Um, you know, for the play equipment, the color, yeah, the colors can change. I mean, there's a, a lot of colors. I, I almost want to say too many color choices, but the, um, you know, one vendor caution gets too dark of materials because it gets hot in the sun. And so there is a discussion about what are the right color choices? And even, you know, changing some of that, um, equipment a little bit.
Right. Hold up, Nate a sec. Pam, can you put up the playground or maybe you can?
I can, um.
Just to show those colors. I know there was some like lime green in there. Um.
Oh, you know, sorry, same thing. Um, what's wrong with lime green?
I know, just, uh, you know, just wanted to show it. Yep.
No, I think, yes, I, my hope too would be that, um, the colors maybe read pretty, um, you cut quite bright and artificial on here and it could just be the way it's presented. I mean, I, I agree that it's, um, you know, at during the forums, everyone had talked about, um, you know, whether it's more muted colors or something that's not as bright and thematic. Um, so that's something we can consider.
Yeah. And just when people are talking about colors, honey, um, like if you stop there for a sec, you know, there's posts, you know, she said she doesn't like, I think the putty of the brown color, where I think some of the slides and such, they sort of almost only come in those colors. Like this is something that might, you might want to, you know, delineate out and find out what are the selections? Um, cause there we see lime green, you know, some parts of the pieces must come in colors, but some pieces may have a very limited um, number of colors. Cause like the dark can get hot.
You know, the vendor did here, this was a, um, this is probably one of their standard color palettes. So, you know, they have, um, like gray or silver posts and then a few, few different colors. And so, um, you know, they've said that almost anything can be customizable, probably not at a cost. It's just, you'd have to, you know, go through and choose it. So I think there's like five different, um, color, uh, colors on, say for instance, this play structure. Um, you know, there's posts, there's this plastic, there's climbing, there's caps and there's the surface. And so I think any of that, I think those can, I agree that, you know, the slide material maybe have, you know, six different colors. Um, you know, and then this metal, this green right here, there might be 30 different colors. And so it's just a matter of, of choosing a palette that works and, um, you know, can, you know, can maybe be more subdued.
Thank you. Um, and just, uh, if we have another map, you know, I was talking about the table. Ironically, the circle there has a-
Yeah, so yeah.
Um, but it, it, you mentioned that stone area in that circle. That's sort of like what you got, uh, the DPW is planning to do. You know, so she was, you know, if people are in that circle and they couldn't, didn't want to sit i- at a table, they can sit on the stone benching.
Right.
And, and you'll have other benches nearby. You know, you said that a couple of times that you definitely want to have a lot of benches.
Yeah. So this, this mockup right here, you know, we envisioned a sign here, a bench here. You know, what we've talked about here is creating a, a better edge along this by doubling up benches here just to create more, um, you know, more seating and then also more of a barrier. The, um, you know, movable chairs is interesting. The, um, you know, one of the designs for the North Palm had a plaza with movable chairs. Um, just so, you know, people can, can sit how they'd like. Um, it's, I mean, that's something I think we can discuss as a team, as a design team.
I lived near a new park in California and they did put in some movable chairs, very heavy one, not more than aluminum. They were some kind of metal that was very and they did have them chained, which made them hard to move, um, but that was for theft. But unfortunately, by the end of two years, they were all magically gone. Um, so I know that's a concern. You, you don't want your furniture to travel.
Right.
So, you know, maybe ask the vendor. I think the vendor would, would have a lot of insight on that about-
I mean, even at the, those, that, uh, round table and those chairs, I think it's a, they wa- it weighs 350 pounds as a set. And so we talked about not bolting them, but having them be, you know, loose. I mean, they ki- can't really be moved, but I think some one of the, um, when we were talking about it for Groff, someone said, well, you know, someone could pick it up. I'm like, okay. If someone is really intent on stealing something that weighs 350 pounds, they could try to drive on there with a pickup truck and a bunch of guys or people and move it. But I'm like, really? I'm like, really? I mean, 350 pounds? Really? That's just seems.
Oh Nate, you're making me gonna say it. How many college kids does it take to move a table?
We'll add some extra weight. We'll make them about 500 pounds, maybe, and see what happens.
All right. Thank you. Um, so I don't see, um, uh, looking back. Oh, I see two more questions. Um, you see them Pam. Um, I'll go with Karen Winter first, if you can give her, um. Okay. So I believe it's Karen Winter, but please, uh, introduce yourself.
I'm Karen Winter. I live at 14 Elm Street. And, um, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about this playground, but now that I see the playground equipment, my heart kind of sinks because this is exactly what I was hoping was not gonna happen. It looks like a lot of plastic and metal. And, um, I sent to Dorothy Pam because I wasn't sure who else to send to a lot of pictures of playgrounds in Berlin and Germany. And I don't know how long, how far along is this whole thing? I'm just thinking of completely different kinds of things, like the rubber trampolines for kids that are built into the ground, which my daughter who lives there says is the absolute hit with all the parents. It's not that expensive. You see it all over Europe now. And then just stone blocks for people to, to, to climb on. You know, this seems to me, I, I don't know, I'm probably too late and maybe this is a cost thing, but my heart is just kind of sinking, looking, everything else looks great. I love the idea of your walkways, the flowers, the grading, the minimal impact. But the play equipment is not what I was hoping to see. So I don't know. Is that a done deal?
Thank you for your question. Um, Nate?
Yeah, I mean, I think this play area, um, I've changed screens is, you know, we'll have manufactured equipment, but as we've discussed, there's many other elements here that will have all natural, whether it's stone, uh, seating or, um, you know, wood chips and logs, you know, peystone and granite blocks. And so there's, you know, another, it's more stone seating area. So there'll be areas of natural material integrated throughout, you know, this amphitheater area. Uh, in terms of the play equipment, the design team, you know, we're, um, it is plastic and metal, but it's also both, you know, accessible and usable for different age groups and it meets the safety standard. So Corinne, thanks for your emails. We did four of them and looked at them from Europe, but I mean, they have completely different safety standards. So those trampolines that are at grade, I, I understand they're, um, they look a lot of, like a lot of fun, but you know, as far as I understand, they wouldn't be allowed. They would not meet safety standards. So there's, um, you know, it is hard to look at other, um, other playgrounds. So, you know, even, um, when we were doing Groff Park, I found some images from, yeah, from Germany and England for different water parks. And, you know, when I spoke with different safety officials, I said, well, actually here in, um, in America, that's considered a pool, not a stream. So you'd have to have a lifeguard, even though it really is just like, you know, a little waiting pool. So, um, I think, you know, the different safety standards and regulations, um, do make it difficult to implement things that you might see abroad. Uh, but my thought is that this area, you know, really is an accessible play area. So the play equipment, you know, there's accessible items that has different age groups. And then there's, you know, all natural material that's integrated and, you know, scattered throughout the, the rest of the area. So, um, you know, in terms of the dedication to materials, I mean, this is maybe a third of the playground area. And so most of it would actually be, to me, would be considered, you know, a more naturalized, um, play area. So, you know, grass mounds and gravel and stones and, you know, the agility area would be logs and stumps.
Yeah, I understand, but to me, that's the heart of the playground. It's the playground. But yes, I guess I, I don't know anything about safety standards. If it's not possible, it's not possible.
I mean, every vendor we've spoken with, they do not, they no longer use natural wood because it, it ages, it splinters, it rots within 10 years. It may need to be treated every year with different chemicals. So, um, we, we've asked three, a few different vendors and they've all said, you know, they maybe 20 years ago, they tried it and they've all stopped carrying it. So the best they would do would be a synthetic wood. Um, you know, synthetic material, try to make it look like wo- wood or rock, and that's very expensive.
I see. And what about a rock climbing things that are made out of stone, some creative kind of a stone? Yeah, I see. That's in a different part. Okay. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, the rock down, you know.
Uh, Nate, just adding on to that, you mentioned, oh, we, you know, talked to three different vendors. So, and the pictures you have, I assume are from one vendor who works with art manufacturers. Um, did you look at other manufacturers or other vendors and was this the the look and feel, the aesthetics, um, that, or was it price? Like, you know, why are you leaning towards?
Yeah, the vendor, the images we showed, the, we, we like the vendor. We worked with them before. They're just responsive and, you know, they do have a lot more, um, equipment than that was shown here. So it's a matter now of pushing them a little bit. So these were done, you know, kind of for free, just to show what they're capable of. The other vendors, yeah, I mean, we, I, I really asked for one, um, you know, anywhere from three to five designs, one being all natural material and then the other two with, you know, manufactured and none of them provided an all natural design because they say they just don't do it. So, um, you know, they were all somewhat similar, to be honest. I mean, it, I guess it's just a matter of, you know, some vendors, um, might carry the, the tables I showed where others are gonna do more wood tables or picnic table style. Um, you know, and, and so there's small variations between them. Um, you know, um, because we use this vendor at different parks, you know, all the, the mechanical equipment, the fasteners, all that stuff is the same. I mean, there may be some, you know, ease of maintenance if, you know, for instance, end caps can be replaced universally throughout the parks in Amherst as opposed to having each park be, um, unique or, um, but yeah, I, I do think it's interesting. The, um, you know, we looked at Plasky, we looked at different parks and, um, it, it is, it's, you can have natural materials, but to have a play structure that's really built up, that has slides and everything else, there were, you know, we haven't found someone that's willing to quote, build one out of natural wood, you know, it's gonna be a manufactured, uh, play structure.
Thank you. I see one more hand in the, um, attendees. Um, Pam, Greta and Bruce.
Yes.
So that you should be able to speak and introduce yourself or selves, whoever's there.
Yeah. Hi, it's Bruce Wilcox, uh,
Hi, Bruce.
speaking. Um, I just want to say how thrilled I am that there's going to be a playground downtown. We've waited many years for this and when our grandchildren are in town, I'm sure we'll be walking over. I'm on Lincoln Avenue. Uh, I had a couple of comments. One, I'd like to second Dorothy, Dorothy Pam's point about, uh, restrooms. I realize it's not within the purview of your present scheme, but something's got to be done about that. And I wonder if any large buildings are built across the street, if a requirement could be added that they include a public restroom. Again, that's not something you can uh, determine today, but I just throw that out there as an idea. Uh, the other point is that, uh, when we visit our grandchildren who are in San Francisco, every one of the public parks has a sign as you enter the playground that says only, um, those who are accompanied by children may come in the playground, that adults can't just hang there on their own. I think that's actually a good idea in a college town and I wonder if that's anything that you had given any thought to. Thank you.
I had forgotten about that San Francisco rule. Yeah. Um, Nate, do you have any comments on those or Chris?
No, um, you know, we hadn't talked about that limiting- You know, we hadn't talked about that limiting, you know, the users typically, we just say it's open to the public and, you know, without really restriction unless there is. You know, unless someone's trying to vandalize or, you know, it's after hours or something, but. Again, something to consider.
It is, I will say the parks that I was familiar with in San Francisco, they were completely fenced, so they could be closed at night and that was part of it by entering. You had a child with you, where this one, it's even with some fencing, it would still be very open, but it's a good concept. Um. Alright, so I I do see some uh board members have their hands, I'm gonna recognize.
Christine, can I interrupt you?
Yep.
We have um, someone has put um a question. In the Q and A, which I did not believe was.
Poss- yeah, so.
Was accessible here, so it's a person. Um who is still attending, I'm not sure if that person wants to speak for himself or.
Well, it can be lumped in, so I was gonna, if I recognize Chris, I also wanted to mention that we have gotten other comments via email. And um I think the website and we got a lot of them um emailed to us today. I did read through them all, I haven't given them all a hard thought yet, um but. I want to ask Chris, how should we start handling those, I know this isn't the only meeting, hearing, meeting that we're having.
I I wanted to say that um. This is the first of probably two public hearing sessions on this project, we're not. Um complete in our design, but we wanted to start out and give you all the information we had so far. But we're gonna recommend that you continue this public hearing to um your next meeting, which is May twentieth. And at that time, you might want to um, you know, read through or summarize. The comments that you've received online and that have been um emailed to us. And uh you know, mention the names of the people if you can figure that out, um but that might be a good time to to handle that. And and you really don't need to feel like you have to wrap this up tonight, because we don't have. All the answers that you're looking for or that we hoped to present to you.
Great, so that would give the board members some time to, you know, we receive all of the comments, so we can not only read them, we can think about it. And that will adjust possibly the questions we ask at the next meeting. Um Pam, so back to that Q and A question, so there's no name attached or anything?
There is, I'm actually trying to send them a message right now to s- to see if they want to um speak during the public comment.
Okay, we can wait and Ken flick back to them, um I'll move to back to some of the board members, I see. I see three hands up, and I believe I saw Janet's go up earlier uh first, so I recognize Janet.
Thank you, um I just had a quick question or an idea, there seems to be a lot of public interest in the park. And I know it's in progress and being Nate, it's be- and the. Um DPW and Planning Department being very responsive to comments, is there some way? To kind of post this information and keep people current, not minute by minute. But, you know, people are very interested and is there a place on the website, the planning department website, that, you know, the latest plans can go or. You know, in a week or so, or something like that, just to keep people informed.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, there's a, there is actually a product webpage, and I think we could. We could benefit it, benefit um by updating it, and we could do that um soon, and then. Um you know, we we, it's it's linked to the LSC commissions, um they have a um like a what's happening or a kind of a. Uh another um kind of page on their site, so it's linked to a few different areas, so that even to the public works um. Current projects, so I think we could update that and maybe put it in the news again and just kind of put it out there.
Yeah, maybe even on the town crawl, I mean, it's a very positive development in a time when there's a lot of um other not so positive things, and I think people are very interested. So it'd be nice to show. What what the town is working on and things moving ahead, and also, you know, obviously, you're taking people's comments very seriously, so. They could be, you know, people can participate, so I appreciate that.
No, thanks, yeah.
Thanks Nate, um next I recognize David.
Uh thank you, I'd like to move to continue to close the public hearing and to continue this to the next. Meeting, um there's been a lot of input, there's still a June one deadline, there's been a lot of work already put on this. We uh have a a sizable topic following, and. So I'd like to make that motion, thank you.
Um, so I have hands up, I I'm gonna just call on Michael, whether he wants to second that, or if he would like to ask his question. He did have his hand up before this, so.
I'll I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Michael, um and then I recognize Chris Bestrop, her hand is up.
So I just wanted to um note that you shouldn't close the public hearing because you will be. Um admitting new evidence next time around, but um certainly uh moving to continue the public hearing to. Um May, May twentieth would be a a great idea.
That's what.
Thank you for clarification, Chris.
And it is seconded, so um at this point, I don't see any other hands. So we will continue this probably at the next meeting, Chris, in two weeks?
Yes, that's right.
Great, okay, so at this point, Nate, thank you, that's a lot, um thanks for all your hard work. Um we look forward to seeing kind of the final draft.
Great, thanks, uh I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, Pam, so I think it'll go back to you if you want to, and.
Christine, we need to do a a roll call vote?
For continuing, oh. Let me get my little, okay, that's right, thank you, so um that's on the table right now to just continue the hearing until the twentieth, so I will do a quick roll call. Um, so I'll start with um Michael.
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Yay, uh David?
Yes.
Doug?
Affirmative.
Janet?
Yes.
And I also, yes, so that's unanimous, move to two weeks from now, so we'll move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is. Um item four, chapter forty R, smart growth, um. Karen Sonnberg, Housing and Planning Consultant, and David Eisen, Architect of Ab- uh Abacus. Uh Architects and Planners present a review of the chapter forty R, Smart Growth Study. And proposed draft zoning amendments, including design standards, and I know Chris Bestrop mentioned that she would like to um speak first. So, Chris, yeah.
Thank you, Christine, I I just wanted to give a brief introduction so that people know what we're doing tonight. Um in uh nine, two thousand nineteen, the town of Amherst received a Planning for Housing Production Grant. From uh Mass Housing, and they contracted with, we contracted with Karen Sonnberg and um. David Eisen of Abacus Architects and Planners to analyze zoning and um give us some input about affordable housing development opportunities. So we've held um. Three public meetings so far, one last April, one in June, and one in December. And we've heard a lot about what uh what is smart growth, what is chapter forty R? Um we've gotten a lot of good information, we've got a lot of in- input from the public at those three meetings. And now um the planning board uh wanted to have an opportunity to. Um find out a little bit more about forty R and discuss it among themselves, because some planning board members. Weren't able to go to any of those public forums, and um the planning board uh is feeling that they would. Um like to have an opportunity to talk about this, even the people who did go to those public forums couldn't talk about it. With their fellow planning board members, so that's what this is all about, um we're gonna have a presentation from the two consultants. And then there will be an opportunity for planning board members to ask questions and to um discuss this. Uh possible proposal, but I wanted to make the uh point very clear. That this is not um something that is a a firm proposal that's coming before the planning board, this is not a public hearing. Although you may wish to hear comments from the public, the planning board will not be making any decisions tonight. Other than possibly to uh continue to look into this um forty R as a as a proposal. But um I think so, you know, some people were worried that this was kind of um. Moving too quickly and there wouldn't be enough opportunity for public input, so this is really just an opportunity. The planning board to hear about it, planning board to discuss, and then if there are public comments and you wanna um. Receive those, you can do that, but there will be plenty of other opportunity to talk about this in public forums.
So, Chris, before you introduce the consultant, um. So just to be clear, this, so they're coming today just to present what they've been working on, and um. Are they done with this, or do they plan to do yet another public um talk? You know, um or would it be down the road if decisions were made on to do something with forty R? Then there would be more meetings for the public and and reach out.
So I'm not really sure about that, I haven't really talked to the consultants of themselves about this. My understanding is that they um were intending to do another public forum, a fourth public forum, and they have graciously agreed to. Have this meeting with the planning board, um specifically with the planning board, um but, uh you know, the actual. Uh determination of whether they will be coming back, or whether it will be on staff to make presentations is to be determined. Um so, so I'm gonna leave that as an open question, but I hope that they will be able to come back and give a presentation to the public. And have the public. In, you know, give their input, certainly, the intent um on the part of planning department staff. Is that there will be many opportunities to talk about this in in a public forum, whether or not the consultants are there.
Right, so there are resources that are coming to us today, and we can ask hard questions to them about forty R.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So I should introduce them.
Chris, can I ask you to wait just a second?
Yes.
I have been able to bring over David Eisen into the panelists. Um I'm not sure if Karen is here, we have one person in attendees named Karen. Just, just Karen, so I'm gonna ask that person to speak a second.
Who are you, Karen?
Karen?
I'm Karen Sonnberg, I'm here.
Alright Karen, I'm going to move you over to the panelist right now, thank you.
Is this a good time to introduce the consultants?
Yes, I'm sorry, Chris, thank you.
Yeah, so we're very pleased to have with us tonight Karen Sonnberg and David Eisen, who have been working with us since um. Probably the the winter, or actually maybe even the fall and summer of two thousand eighteen and all through two thousand nineteen. And uh you know, participating in these public forums, which everybody, or a lot of people. Had an opportunity to attend, um so Karen and David, please give your presentation, and then. I'm sure the planning board and the public will have some questions.
Thank you, I just wanna ask Pam, or who is uh in charge of the slides?
Nate, are you there, I have it up right at the moment. Um so I can, I can run with it.
So, yeah, thanks, yeah, I I I'm, you know, I saw the, looks like I could, you know, help point if the um. Are you, I don't know, Pam, did we ever figure that out, how I could also do it, I I don't have that access right now.
You, you should just be able to do, give it a try. No?
I'm viewing your screens, but I'm not sure if I can actually do anything with it.
Okay, you should be able to an- an- annotate it, if you look up at the top.
I'm gonna take request remote control from your screen.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, that'll work.
You can take it.
And just tell, give him one okay.
There you go, but now you have to get rid of the pencil I made.
Okay, alright. You want me, do you want, Pam, do you want me to, want me to um move it forward and everything, and you can?
Do, if if you're willing to, that would be great, and then I will stick up watching for hands.
I can do that.
Taking notes.
Yep.
Perfect.
Hey, so I see um. David, his screen, his video's off. And he's able to speak, and where's the Karen?
Is my voice coming through?
It is now, hello.
I don't see my picture, uh I don't know if that's a big loss.
Uh can you turn on your, can uh your video on the bottom left, is it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
There we go. Okay.
Pam, I don't see the Karen yet in the panelists.
I can't get to my panelist thing right all of a sudden.
She's, she. I do hear you Karen, but hold on a moment, so Pam, I see that you've given her talking permission, but she's still in attendees. So we don't have a screen for her.
Well done. Promote to panelist. There she goes.
Great.
This is promoting you as a panelist, okay.
And if Karen, you, if you wanna, if you wanna turn on your video, you can go down to the bottom left and turn video screen.
There we go.
Fantastic, welcome.
Everyone.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. So should we get on with it, with the uh presentation?
The floor is yours. Is driving your uh slides, so.
Great, well, thanks for Chris, uh to Chris for the introduction for Nate and Pam on the technical support. And uh you folks for putting us on your agenda uh this evening. Uh uh David and I are gonna go through this slideshow as uh expeditiously as we can, so we have time. For questions and comments, uh the focus of the presentation is to really look. At, you know, where we've come, where we are now, and a little bit on where we, where we're headed. Um, next slide.
Yeah, so you're, okay, it, um sorry, it does work, alright, I was just.
Is that okay? You have to double click Nate, right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, the focus of this technical assistance project, which was funded um. On by the state under, because the town got a housing choice designation. Uh the focus was on uh exploring uh smart growth uh in Amherst uh through. A forty R, smart growth overlay district zoning, which is uh meant to really. Promote mixed-use development, multifamily development, with the inclusion. Of uh affordable housing requirements and design standards. Um in addition to the forty R work, we were also asked to. Um provide some input on other potential development opportunities or sites in the community that might be suitable. For some amount of affordable housing. Um the major tasks have been to kind of engage in a significant community engagement process. Uh to look at a number of options with respect to potential locations. For a smart growth overlay district. Um and to do research and analysis regarding to uh zoning and uh. Policies that have worked effectively in other places and that might resonate with uh the town of Amherst. And once again, importantly, design standards, because the zoning is by right, design standards become very important. Uh to protect community character, and then to prepare a draft bylaw. We have uh here tonight to, we'll get into it, to present at least the preliminary components of that. Uh bylaw, next. Um slide. So. With respect to what we hope to touch base on tonight, uh we're gonna just. Um talk a little bit about where forty R is currently uh working. Um look back a little bit to where we have been uh going and we're um. To get to this point in the planning process tonight, uh we're gonna talk about some of the issues that we've uh. We've heard throughout the planning process. And um talk about, you know, how a town establishes a forty R district. And then get into the major components of the proposed uh preliminary draft zoning. Um also uh speaking a bit on uh next uh steps, next slide. So this map shows uh uh in the shaded yellow areas where, uh what communities have. Uh forty R districts in place, and that totals to about forty-nine districts across forty-two municipalities. Uh with Azerai zoning for over nineteen thousand projected units. Um and getting. Um, and getting, you know, approaching four thousand units that are uh, being built uh, or have been completed. You can see that uh, the bulk of the four yard districts are uh, in the eastern part of the state, but certainly there are a number of uh, four yard districts in proximity to Amherst. Um, next slide. Including East Hampton, uh, which passed a forty R district with a projected four hundred and eighty-two housing units, fifty of which have been completed and eighteen units approved. And those eighteen units are in a mixed-use development uh, where the developer put it two uh, properties together. Um, the uh, first floor is retail, there are some handicap accessible units in the rear and um, most of the residential units uh, above the first floor that include four affordable housing units. Next slide. Um, and North Hampton um, actually has uh, has uh, three at this point uh, forty R districts. Two in uh, various, two, two in separate phases of the Village Hill uh, project that involved the redevelopment of the state hospital um, on thirty acres with a projected four hundred and twenty-nine units, of which a hundred and forty-nine have been approved. And with respect to a mix of housing, it includes single-family housing, multifamily housing, homeownership, rental, has some special needs housing, um, some workforce housing is a, a true mix of housing types to address a range of housing needs. It also approved more recently, a third forty R district that centers on only one building. Um, which uh, is sponsored by the Valley CDC uh, for thirty-one units of enhanced SRO housing. The city decided instead of doing what they typically would do a forty B development, that they would use the forty R process. Um, mainly because, A, they had a template already in place that they were comfortable with and they felt that they could uh, readily adapt this particular uh, project to the uh, forty R zoning um, template. They also had a working relationship with the HCD and had experienced pretty quick turnaround times uh, for approvals. And third, there are financial incentives that uh, come with forty R that would help make the project financially uh, more feasible. Uh, next slide. So, this slide just points to some of the, you know, major milestones that we have uh, realized in this planning process so far. Um, first, we conducted uh, outreach to uh, housing stakeholders um, to almost thirty uh, interviews, largely to get early input on um, key challenges and opportunities for uh, forty R or other affordable housing developments. Getting guidance on what they thought were uh, appropriate locations for forty R district as well as potentially other properties that might be conducive to including some affordable housing uh, development. Uh, we held our first community meeting on April fourth. We brought in representatives from various state entities, including uh, Mass Housing um, which uh, provided funding for this project. Uh, DACD, which is the approval entity for this uh, for any forty R district. Um, the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, as well as the Massachusetts uh, Smart Growth Alliance, and we went through uh, local and state housing needs, uh, smart growth principles uh, as well as uh, forty R more specifically, and this particular technical assistance project. The uh, we then moved on to a site analysis strategy uh, that relied you know, heavily on what we heard from the first community meeting. Um, and through the interview uh, process, where we were uh, where we obtained a whole list of site selection criteria that would be critical in trying to locate um, a forty R district, um, as well as uh, input on um, what folks thought were uh, reasonable locations for a forty R district. Um, we held a second community meeting on June fourth to obtain additional input on priority uh, site selection criteria and best locations for forty R district. Uh, all these community meetings had a, a presentation and uh, break, small breakup groups, so there was real kind of engagement of participants of i- in discussions and feedback uh, towards the project. Um, I should add, at the second community meeting, we, based on our initial input, we came in uh, kind of focusing on three potential four yard districts, which included the downtown, North Amherst, and Palmeroy Village. Based on the input we got from this meeting, we added a fourth uh, location, which was East Amherst. Um, and then we went back and we looked at the uh, what was being discussed and uh, in the four, at June fourth meeting, and realized there was a, a large agreement that those four areas were, would be good uh, smart growth uh, areas for forty R, but there didn't seem to be any consensus on which was the best area. Uh, so we went through a process of revisiting the site selection criteria, prioritizing uh, them and then trying to uh, reflect on those by the locations, the four locations that uh, were identified. And based on that analysis, the downtown edged out the other three uh, areas. But it was clear that all four areas would be uh, suitable, and so we uh, decided to take the downtown on as the first location and given how uh, the town's experience with that, look to the other locations as uh, possibilities in the future. We then held a third committee meeting in December nineteenth to go over this location selection process um, and obtain additional input on how we can make forty R uh, work best and introduced uh, design standards and got some feedback on design standards that are uh, would be integrated into the actual zoning. Uh, from, from state uh, requirements and state guidance, as well as looking at uh, other uh, forty R zoning bylaws. And then reflecting on all the input that we've obtained through the course of the project, we drafted a uh, forty R bylaw, we took a stab at it, and um, uh, we're gonna present the key components of it tonight. Uh, we have planned on having a fourth community meeting to get input on the draft bylaw, and yes, David and I have been committed to doing that, given COVID nineteen, it becomes a little dicier, but uh, stay tuned uh, to um, to, to that. Um, and let me also mention that the presentations from the three community meetings um, are on the town's website, so people who are curious about kind of the focus of those meetings uh, uh, please uh, go to the website. Next slide. Next. Slide, there we go. Well, you can imagine through the length and uh, of this uh, project and all the meetings and uh, we, we, we have heard quite a lot from folks, uh, comments and issues that we need to um, really need to respond to um, in preparing this uh, this zoning. Some of the themes that we have frequently heard um, are just listed below. Um, there was, there was general agreement, if not consensus, that smart growth zoning makes sense uh, in Amherst. Um, and it would be a useful to, a tool to uh, to explore. Um, another comment or theme was the town should guide development to areas that are most appropriate for greater density and away from rural areas and environmentally sensitive sites, away from greenfields and in areas uh, where uh, mixed uses and density are important, appropriate. And residents want a vital downtown with mixed uses. They also wanna maintain the historic quirky character of the downtown too. Um, but there is, I think, general support for the notion that the downtown needs more investment. Um, another perspective has been that the town lacks meaningful design standards in forty R provides a vehicle for really articulating uh, clear standards that resonate with the uh, with the community and uh, the town's character. Um, very importantly, the integration of affordable housing is important, and that's something uh, in the downtown, it's not mandated in zoning. Um, the town does have inclusionary zoning in places, you know, for special permit, uh, but uh, there was some, you know, chagrin about doing development in the downtown and doing new housing and not having any collusion of affordability. Uh, I mean, it's, it's worth mentioning that we have heard that there should be some consideration for uh, coupling an adoption of a forty R uh, smart growth district with some down zoning uh, in the downtown um, in the BG district, because uh, five-story uh, development in that district is allowed by right. Um, because of the concerns regarding the inclusion of affordable housing and design standards, it would be advantageous for the town to have developers apply the forty R permitting as opposed to um, the underlying zoning um, which is allowed. Um, and, and thus uh, getting uh, preventing some of the problems that some perceive uh, cropped out as far as new development uh, in the downtown area. And um, parking uh, remains uh, a, a challenge. Next slide. Uh, this uh, flow chart just shows kind of the major steps that are needed uh, to establish a zoning of forty R district. Um, I mean, it's basically a do-si-do with the state. Um, and with this locality not being able to move forward uh, with uh, with zoning, with, with approval without uh, preliminary approval from the state, and we have been ongoing discussions with the state and keeping them apprised of where we are in the uh, process and getting their input. Um, so uh, uh, that has been, I think, very helpful. Uh, next slide. So now we get to the major components of the bylaw. Uh, it is important to note that this bylaw uh, based on forty R statute regulations must be all-inclusive, if, without reference to other zoning uh, in the, the town's bylaw. Um, the first section of bylaw states a purpose, and um, and we have included language that basically states to foster a range of housing opportunities, along with mixed-use development components to be proposed in a distinctive and attractive site development program that promotes compact design, preservation of open space, and a variety of transportation options, including enhanced pedestrian access to nearby, to employment and nearby uh, services. We have, I mean, and uh, we have added that um, that the purpose is also to be in accordance with the purposes of uh, the Massachusetts Generalized Chapter forty R. Uh, under the purpose, it also lists uh, some objectives um, that range from diversifying housing tops for, types for a variety of incomes and ages and household sizes, um, and uh, establishing quality and design standards in a fair and effective uh, development um, permitting and approval process. Uh, promoting sustainable and pedestrian, pedestrian develop, friendly development. And, and another objective relates, or a couple of objectives relates to uh, generating positive tax revenues and also additional financial uh, resources that come with forty R uh, zoning approval and uh, development. Uh, section two includes a list of definitions that are uh, in the bylaw. Uh, section three is establishment. Um, this section defines uh, the, the boundaries of the downtown Amherst Smart Growth Overlay District. And will uh, and references a zoning map that would be created. Um, section four on applicability. It, you know, clarifies, reinforces that this uh, bylaw is all-inclusive. Uh, it states that the developer also may uh, apply uh, the requirements of the underlying uh, zoning um, over the zoning in, in the overlay district. Uh, section five is permitted uses. Um, with the residential project, projects, including multifamily uh, mixed-use development. Um, also including multifamily development, includes so parking and other accessory units. Uh, other uses such as commercial office, cultural, civic, institutional, or other non-residential uh, uses. Um, and then next page, next slide, uh, chapter six is on affordability requirements. Um, it, you know, at, at least twenty percent of housing, housing units must be affordable and eligible for inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory. Um, but twenty-five percent in the case of rental developments, and that would allow, allow all units in that development to count towards the SHI. A, a basic requirement is that there has at least twenty percent of all units created in the uh, zoning district must be affordable. Um, section seven, under plan approval. Um, it uh, you know, stipulates the as-of-right permitting and approval process. It uh, design dates the planning board as the plan approval authority. Um, and the, the forty R regulations do allow um, the PAA to adopt administrative rules and regulations, but they have to be approved by D H C D. And then it goes into some plan approval procedures uh, with a pre-applelic, application process. Uh, a list of required materials as part of the application. Um, states uh, that fees uh, are allowed, but they have to be approved by D H C D um, as reasonable. Um, allows for the circulation of the application to other boards for review and comment. Uh, and then, and, and important uh, public hearing is essential, and peer review is also allowed. Uh, section nine, next page, um, and regarding plan approval decisions. And this is important, plan disapproval is only allowed when an application is incomplete. Does not meet zoning requirements, and it is not possible to adequately mitigate significant adverse project impacts on nearby properties by means of suitable conditions. Uh, waivers by the planning board can be allowed, but not affordability requirements. They cannot be waived. Um, and project phasing is allowed, but you know, once again, the affordability requirements are uh, an important part of that and has to be uh, they have to be proportionate uh, to numbers of units included in each phase. Uh, section ten deals with uh, a change to plans after approval, uh, allowing minor changes. Allowing minor changes without the need for a public hearing, but any major changes. Must be processed through a new application. Section eleven goes on to design standards and I'm going to pass the baton to David who will uh take up from here.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and just, this is sort of ten seconds of background. Karen and Abacus have been working together for what, a dozen years? Cities and towns all over Massachusetts on affordable housing planning. And Karen's area of expertise is the process and procedures and policies. We're architects and planners. It's the design and a physical form. So. Section eleven is design standards, which is about planning the physical form. So they're called design standards and they deal with a series of subjective issues. It deals with design. But these are required. So it's assumed that there's a certain amount of negotiation, but only to a limited extent. These are requirements that are meant to protect the best interests of, of the town. Um and they're intended to reflect the kind of vision of the community. And there are diverse set of opinions in Amherst like there are in most communities. But we're trying to distill out of everything we hear, a kind of sense of where Amherst, Amherst could or should. Go to meet a broad range of issues, you know, wanna maintain the small-town character. But if it's completely unaffordable to the vast majority of people, because there's enough housing, that tends to be a problem. So what we're trying to do with the design standards is preserve the positive aspects of the existing town character. There are places and buildings that people really love. Improve the pedestrian experience. There are places where there are big swaths of asphalt and lots of curb cuts. Can we improve those areas with the, with the design standards? Make good for business. If it improves the pedestrian experience, if we get people living downtown, that's probably gonna be a really good thing. For business and we're in a challenging period right at the moment. Nobody knows what the future holds, but we're assuming that there will be a kind of rebound. That people will wanna go to bars and restaurants and stores and do the things they've done. And we should at least plan for that, even if nobody really knows what the future holds. And a big component is. Affordable housing development and I think that's one of the major things that triggered the whole forty R. Process and procedures at the state level. So the goal, with the standards begin by laying out goals. For design. And that's the context in which designers and developers do their planning and decision-making. And they allow a certain amount of discretion on the part of architects and developers. Cause you can dictate good design. You can't tell everybody exactly what kind of windows go where. But you can set the parameters in which those, those plans are, are, are developed. And the trade-off is this, you have far more rigorous standards than you have with normal zoning. But on the other hand, if developers and property owners meet those standards. It's as-of-right and it accelerates the process and there's a kind of certainty there. That's the kind of. Public-private deal that's being made. So next um, next slide. Then the state reviews the standards. So a city or town can set up onerous requirements and the state will say. These are too onerous. These will prohibit really just about any kind of development. We can't allow this to pass as forty R, but you know, we don't wanna get to that point. We, we, we wanna send something to the state. That really is pretty reasonable and is a win-win-win situation. So the design standards are based on what's called form-based zoning and people on the planning board may or may not. Be familiar with that standard zoning. It's about crunching numbers and uses. And if you meet those requirements, you know, you're good to go. Form-based zoning is about design. It's about massing. It's about proportions. It's about materials. It's about articulation. And the challenge is to make those requirements really clear. Without trying to dictate to, that, that tends to be counterproductive. And that's why this is a step in the process. You know, we have what we think are a pretty solid set of design standards and, and bylaw, but we want input. And the sort of standard line is, we are experts on planning and design. You are experts on Amherst and, and, and we wanna work with you on that. So um the, and I think the next slide, you'll see this in a map. The standards define three sub-districts. So we have a relatively large forty R district that we're proposing. But it's different on different sides. So. And I didn't make up these names. These are standard names based on form-based zoning, urban center. North Pleasant, East Pleasant, Triangle, the really the downtown areas of, of. Of Amherst downtown. General Urban is a budding West Cemetery, which is a little bit different. You know, it's not bounded by a street on the east side. It's not bounded by a street on the west side. It's removed from North Pleasant. But is, seems to be an extension of the downtown area. And then suburban, not necessarily suburban, but suburb, urban facing North Prospect. Talikin in Coles Lane. You know, these, this abuts uh residential neighborhood. And it can't be and shouldn't be the same uh design standards as on um North Pleasant as downtown. And the standards do provide basic dimensional requirements, heights, setbacks. Along with, say, planning facade, streetscape and, 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 and other kinds of um requirements. So go to the next slide. So there you see, and this is, it's a little blurrier than I would like, but you can see the outlines of the forty. R district. You can see the kind of heavy hatching along North Pleasant. Triangle and East Pleasant. You can see there's a triangle on the east side. And that's the second sub-district, which is not the, 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 the urban center. And if you go, um, you'll see this up on the north. North of Triangle Street. And then on the left-hand, on the west-hand side, abutting the residential districts. So these are, you know, they, they, the, the standards are significantly different for those areas. And then next slide. So the next four slides are the kind of illustrations that will, will be part of this. So, you know, mo-most standard zoning doesn't have illustrations. There'll be a series of illustrations. So there are lots of words in the design standards. But also pictures, you know, how do you avoid huge swaths of asphalt? By making this kind of parking guidelines actually part of the requirements. Next. So building articulation, again, not part of standard zoning. Articulation on the first floor, which identifies this. And, and, and this would not be, this would be in, you know, along North Pleasant. This would be different in the different sub-districts. But you can see the section, you can see the articulation at the top and at the bottom. This is very characteristic of the older buildings in your downtown and lots of downtowns. So this isn't meant to be a stylistic dictate, but to accentuate the pedestrian zone. It gives some profile along, uh, along the top. This is, tends to be what makes good downtowns. Next slide. Streetscape. This may or may not be part of it. The streets are already in place. To what extent do we wanna require developers? To develop what's outside of their property? That's a question. Should this be included? Might there be new streets? Especially um towards the east between the first and the second sub-district. Might there be a new street if property owners get together, aggregate their properties? And instead of having big backyards and big parking lots, did do a new street? So, so that's one of the questions we have. Uh next slide. And facade design guidelines. This is not to be, this is not meant as a picture of what the facade should look like. But it's meant to define some of the key elements we expect uh developers, property owners and their architects to provide. These are described in words. But here are pictures as well and you can see there's some dimensions there. And there will be more illustrations and different illustrations with the different sub-districts. But the first thing we wanted to find out is, like, do these sub-districts make sense? You know, we wanna, if you think there are more substantial revisions, we wanna hear about it and then we'll fill in all the holes. Hey, and tie things down. And then the final um slide is a series of questions. And these are sort of Karen's questions, my questions. I can, um, I've got the mic. I can go through these. These are some of the areas where we want uh input. Require all affordable units um yeah, it to retain affordability in perpetuity. So that's a, there are, you know, state requirements, but there are some, you know, local decisions that can be made on this. Often there's a minimum project size to require affordability, like thirteen units and above. Might developers wanna keep parcels small and stay under that so they don't have to provide affordable. Affordable units. Do we, where do we want the threshold to be? Should there be accessibility and also potentially sustainability requirements beyond meeting building code? For example, city, the city of Boston for larger developments requires meeting um legal standards. Setbacks from the street. Is it appropriate to set minimum, oh, I'm sorry, this is parking. Big, big, big question and one. We haven't really tackled because it really is a much bigger issue. Should there be minimum parking requirements? Let's say one space per unit or one space for three hundred square feet of retail or office. Should there be a maximum requirement, which is unusual? That, but um more towns like Cambridge has the maximum amount of parking. So a developer may say, hey. The market's telling me two spaces per unit. That's what I wanna do and Cambridge will say. Nope, too many cars on the street. We don't wanna do that. So we really want input on that. We're feeling like along um North Pleasant. Buildings should be a minimum of fifteen feet away from the curb line, but a maximum of twenty feet. You know, if you want a retail district on a main street, you don't want buildings to be set back thirty-five. Or we don't believe buildings should be set thirty-five feet back behind a front yard. But again, we wanna hear from people. Forty R street design requirements. I, I, I showed this slide of street design requirements. Should those be required? The three sub-districts. Are people feeling like? Yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And these haven't been put out in public. We heard. Over and over and over, there should be sub-districts as different characters. Are these the right dividing lines in the right sub-districts? And single-family homes? Should those be allowed in the two denser developments? And we could probably come up with a lot more questions and you may have a lot of questions. Those, those are the questions we came up with. And in the final step, we, we wanna resolve all of this work with the state on obtaining the go-ahead for local, um, local adoption. And then Karen, I don't know if you wanna add anything or whether we wanna turn it over.
Can I just add something? I mean, clearly there's gonna be a whole process um of digesting the draft between the planning board and another public meeting and. To work towards even going to the state for um. For the next, next step. I wanted to point that out. Maybe I could add something more. We wanted your opinion, but uh, well. I could, I, I guess as these questions are raised, we can, we can, we can deal with them and uh so.
I guess. As you said, this is a twenty-eight days document, so there is a lot to digest.
Thank you. Um, there, you're not kidding. There's a lot to unpack here, a lot of good information. Um, thank you so much. That's a lot. I'm sure we're all a little like, woo. If you're willing to take questions now, I was gonna open it up to the board first. So hello out there. If uh anyone has questions. I see Maria has a question.
Yes, thank you for that. I went to, I think, all, all the public forums um that you held and um. Didn't manage to speak to any of you, but I really liked a lot of ideas proposed and um, there is so much here. I'm. Gonna try to stay big picture and not get into the weeds right away. Um. I guess maybe the big picture thing for me is um. The, the, the sort of demising line of how you create this overlay district. I looked really closely at this afternoon and um. There are a lot of different owners of the parcels, but generally I liked your idea of just putting the parking in the back, creating a streetscape. And there is a little bit of conflicting information here and there about whether it was a zero street setback or fifteen and. It sounds like you're heading more toward the fifteen. But um, I guess, yeah, I, it would have been nice to have a little more of a fine-tooth comb in dividing the sub-districts. Because um, there are some areas where. It doesn't quite make sense, like for example, the post office is included and there is this church that owns a bigger parcel. But we've divided it into two different. Sort of sub-districts. So I, I guess I'd like to know more about um. Do you see this as a, a general? Map that um maybe it's malleable as far as. It's um boundaries, but that we, we stick with like your idea of, all right, if you wanna create a streetscape. Use these set of criteria. If you wanna create more of a transition area, use these sets. Because right now I think the dividing of the blocks. Seem like they need a little more study, but the idea behind like. Urban versus transition versus residential. It, it feels right as far as what you've proposed. Just sort of big picture question is, you know, did you study the parcels really closely or were you just sort of mapping like? Based on um. Journal circulation of cars versus pedestrian. This is how you came up with that sort of dotted black line. That's the overlay boundary. Because um, there's some areas that still feel like. It's a little too heavy-handed as far as it's this, you know, and so I wonder if you can speak more about just the overall. You know, the boundary, that black dashed line that's in this sub-district map you're showing.
There's a lot of negotiation. So if we did like a time lapse of the different versions of this. You would see that black line wiggling around um quite a bit. So we, 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 we work with a number of people, I mean Karen and I, and Nate was very involved and Chris was very, very involved. Are just, you know, intuitive sense of what made sense. And it's not like this is right and everything else is wrong. And again, this is why we're, we want input. It was our best guess. Is where we, we, you know, allow the opportunities that forty R brings with it. Where mixed-use development, bigger development, uh, multi-family housing development kinda makes sense. I mean, were there particular areas? You know.
I guess, you know, along the, along North Pleasant, uh where the post office is eliminated and I think the. Well, there was always plans for the fire station, but then with the church with the larger, more modern church piece behind it and the. Sorry, I'm jumping on another place, but um, I guess the more southern portion that's closer to the existing taller historic downtown. That area looks like it's. It, it uh maybe needs one more study. I love what you did closer to the two new developments up toward Kendrick Park. I think that what you propose makes a lot of sense and the scale there makes a lot of sense, but I think that part that transitions between. Existing historic downtown going north on um. North Pleasant. It, there, there's a lot of pieces there. That I'm not sure are movable or changeable and that maybe. Maybe that, that should be considered, you know, some of them need to just be considered as landmarks and then others. And then you work from that. Um, I think in your proposal, like from the massing, you did keep the church. But I think almost everything else is um. Uh eliminated other than the newer developments. Which um, I, I think is fine. I think I just. Yeah, I, I think that this little more finer tooth combing of like figuring out the area in the southern part. But um, but generally, I mean, the, what you've sort of come up with. But generally, I mean, the, what you've sort of come up with toward the east side of Kendrick Park, I think is really great. I hope that happens one day. But as far as specific, I mean, there was like a, like a fifty-page document of your form-based code and it took a lot to go through. So I, I guess if there's future meetings, we could go into like specific line by line. I mean, unless you want that now, but I guess with the time we have, I was trying to stay more big picture kind of ideas. Yeah, so yeah, I don't have a specific block and I'm not sure you want the answers like that tonight, but.
Yeah.
Now, that's a good question, Maria. David and Karen, how would you be? Do you have any idea? Because I assume you work with other towns and other planning boards. What would be the best way to get our comments, detailed comments? I mean, we can give you lots of general, but how does that usually work?
Okay.
Yeah, Karen.
I, I think it'd be best to funnel them through Chris or Nate. And so they can see them and then they can channel them to us.
Okay, that's good.
But it would be good to have some detailed comments and if they could be in writing, that would be terrific.
And that's what I was thinking. Would you prefer us to like mark up the document? I think we, we got it as one giant PDF, but if there's a way we can get one that we can do markup or something and then submit our comments to you?
Sure.
Do we want to send it as a Word document? Sometimes it's tough getting twenty-three different Word versions back as markups. Sometimes it's better just to get a list here of the fourteen items from different people. But I, I'm certainly open. I, I don't know, you know, we, every line matters. Every line of writing matters. Every line on that map matters. And as an architect and planner, we work under other people's zoning. So I know the importance of all of this. So we welcome whatever form the comments take.
So I, I appreciate, oh, I don't know why we're going weird. How many speakers do we have? Anyways, I appreciate that comment. So maybe at this point, we should just do a bullet list, writing all of our comments to Chris. And then when we get to a finer version down the road, maybe that, you know, keep doing that and refine. But at least this first round, we, Chris would get a feel of, because a lot of times, you know what happens? A lot of us are saying the exact same comments over and over again. And it could be comments that we really like a section too. So Maria, is there anything else? Or I'm going to, well, I am going to move on to Doug, but first I'm going to recognize Chris. But Maria, do you have anything else? Okay, you're good. So Chris, I'm going to recognize you and then Doug, you're going to be next.
Okay, I was just going to say, I agree that the bulleted list is the better way of communicating. I think that a markup is just really confusing when you have so many people working on a document. And we did actually get some comments from Rob Crowner. I don't know if any of you have seen them. Could be that the consultant just saw them, but he sent in a list of comments and questions that he had and then David responded to them. And, you know, there were all kinds of things like, did you really mean to say this on page five? So I think, you know, referring to particular pages and particular paragraphs, and if you can find a paragraph number to refer to, that will be helpful. General comments would also be useful, but no, we'll, we'll take them in whatever form. But I think that a bulleted list would be best.
And Chris, when would you like our comments back to you?
I think if you could get them back, you know, let's see, what's, what day is this? This is the sixth of May. Maybe by the third of June. We have a meeting scheduled for the third of June and that might be, that would give you a little bit less than a month. Would that be reasonable?
So like get them to you a couple of days before?
Days before that, yes. So maybe the week, the Wednesday of the week before, which would be what? Maybe the twenty-eighth or twenty-seventh of May? Is that Wednesday?
So if that's clear with everyone, we'll go with, get your comments to Chris, a bullet item listing out. And it can be positives, two things you really like, but your comments to Chris by the twenty-seventh of May. Okay, great. Chris, anything else or I'm going to move to Doug?
No, no, nothing else.
Great. I recognize Doug.
I didn't, haven't been to any of the public meetings and I'm new to the planning board. So I'm just figuring out this whole forty, forty R regimen. But I did look at the presentation you made back in December. And so my first question was, how did the audience react or feel about the massing that you presented through the entire zone?
Well, and one of the things, it's always dangerous doing that kind of massing because people sometimes think, oh, this is what they're proposing to build. And we're not proposing anything. This was an illustration of the kinds of things that could happen. It's also dangerous because the current zoning would allow most of that to take place. There were certainly, there's some concerns about the size. I think one of the things that got said repeatedly was, well, you, you know, I can imagine it being that big along North, North Prospect. You know, as long as it wasn't just a one, five-story building from bottom to top. I think people are reacting against what would, what has been built. And a bunch of people said, you know, when you're getting closer to residential neighborhoods, we don't want these big blocky buildings. So, and that's in the design guidelines, it's sort of pushing down. So what was blocked out, some of that would not be allowable, even though we, you know, we did that modeling in the design standards as written because it scales it down towards the perimeter.
Okay.
And other people can weigh in. I mean, everybody filters what they, what they hear, but there, there were certainly concerns and, you know, that's how they were addressed.
And is it, is it, are you getting a lot of feedback?
No.
Okay, good. So I was puzzled why, what I, what I thought was a regulatory regimen focused on residential, why it seemed in some of the locations in the text, it is also applicable to commercial, office, cultural, civic, institutional and non-residential uses. Why is that part of this and not dictated and left in our basic zoning?
I, I can respond to that. The, the zoning has to be all-inclusive. So whatever in the forty R has been included in the bylaw and the forty R does promote mixed uses and housing in, in areas where there are multiple uses. But they, the state didn't want to preclude other types of, of uses and development in a district as well. So it's, can I answer your question?
Well, I, not in a way that I understood, so.
Fifty percent needs to be housing.
But, but it's.
In a mixed use, in a mixed use property, at least, I think it's at least fifty-one percent has to be housing. But there can be other developments within the district that don't include housing.
And so those, and so those developments would still be governed by our basic zoning code?
Yeah, well, we included, we included those uses in the bylaw.
So this is Nate, I, I can't raise my hand. Doug, I think one thing is if, if someone decides to use a forty R, they can only use forty R. So if in the downtown, we said it was only for residential uses, the only time, the only thing they could do would be apartment buildings. And so in a downtown, we'd want a mixed-use building under forty R. So that's why you need to allow other uses. So in North Hampton, in some communities, they have only a residential forty R, but it's in an area where they don't need or want commercial or non-residential uses. But in the downtown, if we want someone to use a forty R and we want it to be mixed-use buildings, we have to allow that within the forty R. Otherwise, they can only do just the residential piece. So they can't, they can't mix and mash. They couldn't say, okay, well, I want to do a little, part of my product will be under forty R and part will be under the underlying zoning. It's basically all forty R or nothing.
Okay.
But we are encouraging along North Pleasant that there be a commercial, be retail, be restaurants on the ground floor and housing up above. But instead of housing, it could be office up above partially, but majority, it has to be housing. So it, it seems appropriate to have mixed use at least along North Pleasant and along Triangle. That's what makes it a downtown.
Okay, and I guess my last question is, is it correct that this really only works as a desirable framework for development if we substantially downzone the areas that are in place now?
And that should have been on our list of questions. I, I regret, but even though, you know, Karen, you brought that up. In our discussions a couple of days ago with Chris and Nate and Karen and I, that was our sense, it would make it much more effective to do the downzoning.
But, but there is still in the, in the forty R, kind of the preliminary boundaries, there's districts, the limited business districts and the forty R would, would apply, would likely be, there would be likely incentive to use forty R instead of the underlying zoning. So that would be a boon to those areas. It's the, it's the general business area where we would like to promote the use of forty R instead of the underlying zoning.
Thank you.
I recognize Michael.
A process question. If we're going to submit bulleted lists of comments on the, on the presentation we just saw, I presume that's on the presentation as well as on the proposed zoning bylaw. If, if we are going to get those, I wonder if Chris could circulate to the planning board members the comments of the other planning board members. I would think it would be very useful to get somebody's idea and spin off an idea off someone else's idea. So that if, as, as comments come in, Chris, whether you could send them out to us and thereby soliciting even more comments from those of us who'd already made them. I don't know whether that's a violation of the open meeting law or not, but it would certainly be helpful if you could keep in communication with us on this issue as things come into you.
Chris?
I might be able to generally characterize the types of comments I'm receiving, but I can't really send out specific comments because of the open meeting law. So, you know, if I start to get bulleted lists of comments in, I could send out something that says, you know, people seem to be concerned about the height of buildings or people seem to be concerned about setbacks or something like that. But it would have to be very general. So I think what I'm imagining is you would send your comments to me by the twenty-seventh of May and then we could have this as a topic of conversation on June third. And then you could still have more time after that to submit more comments. This is not, there's no timeline here. We're not like trying to rush this through or anything. We really want people to be able to talk about it. We want your input. So, you know, I think if we, if we get the comments and we discuss them on June third, then you can send in more comments and, you know, it'll be an ongoing process. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, that's great. I recognize Jack.
Hello. I just want to say, I'm, I, I'm wondering, I apologize, but I have, I have to, I have to get up really early tomorrow morning. I was, had a very, very long day. So I'm just wondering, I'll hang in there for a little bit longer and I apologize. Like I want to understand this better. And if you could kind of condense this material, Chris, in an email that, you know, what we're supposed to specifically review because we've gotten a lot of emails lately.
Yeah.
So, but again, I apologize for needing to check out. But if, if we're, if we're concluding soon, then I'll hang in there a little bit longer. That's all I had to say, thanks.
Thank you, Jack. So at this point, I'm not seeing any other members, but David did just raise his hand, hold on. And I only see one attendee right now. So Chris, I think Jack had a good suggestion. If you can just send a summary, maybe just like what are our expectations and what your expectations are? What we're actually reviewing? Is it, yeah, okay, that would be great. I'm going to recognize David and then I also see Janet. And then I'll go to attendees. If there are any other attendees out there, I see one hand, I think it's a Brian. If there's anyone else, put your hand in and we'll get to that. And then hopefully, we'll be sort of finishing up with that because we are over three hours right now and we'll move on to the rest of the meeting. So right now, I recognize David.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. There's a lot of meat here and, and, and I'm looking forward to working through it. I just wanted to, and perhaps I don't, I, I just want to make sure I, I am understanding at least one part of it. And, and it seems as if the, in terms of the, the residential development, if a proposed project has fewer than thirteen residential units, then the affordability issue doesn't come into play under the, the, the bylaw draft, as drafted.
Can I respond to that right now?
Please.
I am really glad that you brought that up because I did want to discuss that tonight. You know, the state used, they, you know, they have some, some guidance and suggestions and they had a plug-in figure of thirteen and it didn't make sense to me. I thought it was too high and, you know, looking at other forty R bylaws, they don't specify a minimum project size. They just have that twenty percent and twenty-five percent. And given that the overall percentage of affordability in the district as a whole has to be at least twenty percent, thirteen units does, just does not make sense. And so my strong recommendation for your consideration would be just to eliminate any minimum project size in that particular section of the bylaw.
Food for thought. Thanks. Does that answer any more, David? Yeah.
I think there was, shoot, but it flew out.
You know what, David, I'll call.
Oh, no, but yes, I have, I have it. So, so could you, could you, um, could you describe, I mean, some of the, the financial incentives for, that are available utilizing the forty R versus, you know, the, 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 the absence of any, using the forty B? What, so, so that we can get a taste of some of that carrot as well?
I'll respond to that. See, see, there are no financial incentives under forty B. The big incentive under forty B is density and other waivers to zoning. In forty R, there is usually increased in density because there's certain, depending, depending on the type of housing, there are certain thresholds of density that have to be obtained under the, through projects in the district. But there are also what's called incentive payments. So based on the incremental increase in number of units projected in a district, that the, there is a sliding scale on the amount of payments that the state will make to the community. There is also a three thousand dollar density bonus payment that comes with every affordable unit that is permitted in the zoning district through the forty R. So, you know, quite frankly, in districts that are, that are designated for forty R that aren't very. So, you know, quite frankly, in districts that are, that are designated for 40R that aren't very built up, there is obviously a bigger opportunity for these incentive payments as opposed to districts that have already kind of are, are more built up where there's, there are fewer parcels that are undeveloped. And those are the main incentives. I should say, also add that communities that have 40R districts are more competitive for a whole range of discretionary funding the state. An example are Mass Works Infrastructure Funds, where a lot of communities that have 40R districts have also married their kind of development with these extra discretionary funds and capital improvements. And that's another example. Another carrot is that if a, and this is not, actually, this is not a big issue for, for Amherst, but for towns that are still under the 10% affordability threshold, the state has actually denied some comprehensive permit projects that the towns have kind of fought against if the town was making a good faith effort with their 40R district. Another example is bonus points being more competitive for state funding for school development. I mean, those are some examples of, of some benefits from 40R.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move and recognize Janet.
Thank you. Um, there's parts, there, there's, I guess, there are attractive things to this proposal in the 40R district. I am pleased to see the recognition of the need for parking and having it in the rear. I'm a little concerned about a broad waiver of that requirement since that seems to lead us down a path. I'm very much in favor of an increased affordable housing requirement. I've been pushing for a comprehensive affordable housing requirement for all development in Amherst. I like the idea of setbacks on the upper floors and the thoughtfulness to the pedestrian and shopper experience. And I think it's a central issue in economic development, like what will draw people downtown. And I love the idea of clear and consistent zoning rules that apply to everyone and having attractive buildings. People, developers can understand what they can build and residents can understand what can be built and not see all sorts of waivers and, and things. But I still see a lot of possibility for waivers and a lot of language about waivers in this draft. So I do want to say this because I think I was probably at the inception of this idea of a 40R downtown more than three years ago in a zoning subcommittee meeting. And I'm very concerned that the residents most affected by this proposal were not contacted and haven't been pulled into this process. This proposal of a 40R district downtown, mostly along North Pleasant Street, I think initially across Kendrick Park, was made by a planning board member in a zoning subcommittee meeting as a thought experiment. And this thought experiment has gone on and through this process has always, the downtown has always been listed as prime target for this proposal. There are three historic districts around the downtown. The downtown residents are extremely active. They proposed a residential properties bylaw. They meet monthly, very engaged people. They, they're really kind of protecting their neighborhood from, you know, being kind of squished in between UMass and all the activities downtown. I know a lot of people there really support more development and more building downtown, but they really want to participate in what that looks like and the, and the size and scale of that. A lot of people who attended the 40R public meetings weren't there because they knew about the meeting from advertising in the town, but because people personally contacted them. Like I was personally contacted and didn't hear about this meeting. And I've contacted people from the, that neighborhood in subsequent meetings. If you attended a public meeting and you filled out an attendance form, you were never notified about the next meeting. There was no information about the 40R proposal. It was on the planning department website or the planning board website. It's been sort of hidden away on the housing trust fund. So, and even the planning board hasn't been part of this process. It's, it's, I'm almost astonished that we've come to this point. And this very large proposal for re-overzoning, a huge change in zoning in downtown is only, we're only meeting now because of asking for it last January. Doug, you asked questions about how people reacted to this proposal in December 19th. I think people were really taken aback. A lot of people were upset and stunned at the size of the buildings and they've actually gotten, the, the buildings that are being proposed are actually have gone from four stories to five stories in the BL. A lot of people were talking about not having a canyon of buildings on both sides of East Pleasant, North Pleasant Street. People talked about, you know, preserving New England's, you know, Amherst's New England village look, its funky look. Harvard Square has a similar look. It has a mix of tall buildings and small buildings. I don't really understand why one corner of Amherst was picked as, you know, the look for the rest of the downtown. So I have a lot of questions about, you know, why this district was built, picked, the scale, the lack of involvement of the people who were most impacted by it. And I, so I hope this is really the beginning of a discussion with the planning board and the neighbors, neighborhoods around the downtown. You know, maybe it's a good, 40R is, is a great idea, but maybe it's a good idea to start smaller, like using one, you know, like North Hampton or in a different part of town where it's not so consequential or so big to just basically say, we're going to go from three floors of zoning to five stories, you know, in this scale. So I'm just, and I have a lot of very specific questions about, you know, different parts of this, but I know it's late and I just, I'd hate to have us all say, well, this is the proposal and let's just go forward. And this is the site and let's, let's go forward. We haven't even talked to the people who are most involved, affected by it. I could say more, but I, that's the gist of what I'd like to say tonight.
Let's see, we have two attendees.
Can I just add something here? And I appreciate Janet's comments. You know, it wasn't until, it was well into the process when we even landed on the downtown. And that landing came from a lot of input. So, you know, we really tried to go through a deliberate process of trying to identify the best place to start with the 40R district with lots of input from various folks. Now, you know, we're still, we're still not, the, the, the process of getting public input has a ways, a long ways to go here. I mean, we're planning the four, you know, hoping to have a fourth public hearing where we'll talk specifically about the draft bylaw and, and really encourage those and the neighbors to attend. There are also, if the planning board decides to move forward, there'll be required hearings where we, we provide another opportunity to, for input. And, you know, we certainly look for, you know, more instead of less feedback in the community.
Interesting to add to that. I mean, you raised some really good questions. And so a lot of your questions are process questions. Why didn't you? Why can't you? Those are reasonable. And any ones that can make it, their way into notes about specific things, you know, whether it's the outline, like you think that that's a particular problem to include this property or questions about, I mean, five stories, you know, to circle that and say, is this appropriate everywhere? You know, those are good comments. Those would be from you. And then it could become part of a larger process. So appreciate more input on, on all of these issues from you. She's muted.
Christine, you're muted. Thank you. Chris Pestrop, I see your hand up.
Yeah, am I muted? No, I'm not. Okay, so.
I was muted. I had a printer going in the back and thank you for reminding me.
I wanted to acknowledge that we received an email from Maureen Adams today and she is a neighbor. She lives on Bestin Street, I believe. So she's very interested in what happens in the downtown and also in what happens to neighborhoods west of, west of the downtown. She had asked me to read her questions, but I think you have all received her questions and can consider them carefully. And I think Karen and David received her questions today too. So the next time we gather to talk about this topic, you know, maybe you all have had a chance to consider some of her questions. I think it's very late in the evening and I don't really feel that I want to read all of those questions right now. But I wanted to acknowledge that we have received this very detailed and concerned email. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll all take a look at that. I did see the email come in this afternoon. I see Janet's hand and then I'm going to move to the attendees. There's three hands raised there. Janet, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, I just, you know, I have a bunch of comments, but one of, just, just three big ones is, I don't think the proposal addresses or deals with the concerns about student rentals and filling the downtown with students. And so there are ways to restrict graduate from moving in wholesale into apartment buildings. Worst nightmare is building a lot of housing downtown and having it turn, Amherst turned into like a stu- downtown primarily students and what the impact that would have economically. It also, I don't see how it helps that middle income residents can live here. I can see people, I can see apartments at the high end. I could see apartments that are affordable and I don't see how people with middle incomes will be able to afford to live downtown. And are there ways to put that into the 40R? I know Concord has done stuff with having people, you know, what they consider affordable or people with kind of higher incomes. I also feel like there's no protection of the downtown historic resources and community character. And then there's no real encouragement of remediation and reuse of existing buildings. Is there a way to protect facades? The cottages, the quirky storefronts when you're expanding, but you keep the, the, the building. You know, a lot of what people like about Amherst and shopping in downtown is in the BL along North Pleasant Street and those, those, you know, putting up a four, five-story buildings isn't going to help stay that cottage Victorian look, that different things. And so is there a way to put something in the 40R that in, you know, protects those resources? The historic buildings aren't just the churches and hall and the library. So that's, that's all.
Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna move to the attendees and with Pam's help. If I saw, Brian was the first hand that went earlier, if we can go with that. So it is getting very late. I just want to tell them, we really do want to hear your comments and your questions. But if you could try to keep it, you know, as brief and concise, we would appreciate that. And that will give more time for the consultants to possibly give a better answer. Brian, could you please state your full name and where you live?
Yes, Brian Thompson, Six Salem Place.
Welcome.
Janet actually did a pretty good job. I should say, I'm very used to apologizing for people for being between them and lunch. I'm not as used to apologizing to people for being between them in bed. So this is a first time for me. But Janet did a good job of really summarizing my question. I would just, and it really touches on workforce housing or you might say middle-class housing. I think that's how Janet put it. Amherst is, it's a, it's a destination. People, people want to live here. And so if you build housing that is, you know, just the square footage, looks like something a middle-class family would be able to afford, or you try to do it along those lines, you know, it's still going to go at a premium. So I don't, I don't think that just putting in mixed use is going to all of a sudden allow kind of workforce housing to be developed. I think you have to have different policies and different strategies to do that. And that, that's my comment.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Robert. Pam, if you can enable that. And Robert, if you can give your full name and where you are from.
Okay, this is really Dorothy Pam using your husband's computer because mine wasn't working. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Fabulous. Okay, 229 Amity Street. So I went to one of the early hearings and looked at all the kinds of houses that the, they were showing us. And the only ones that I liked that would, would have looked nice in Amherst were the ones we can't have, which is like, like East Hampton can have, making over old buildings, so old factory buildings. But it was all kind of general. And then the next one I attended, it was clear you were talking about downtown Amherst. And I remember that in the breakout groups, there was tremendous consternation. I, I could see it all over the room. We had four breakout groups. People were saying, what? You mean that here? And it was not a smooth event. So I, I guess everyone was told, well, it's just planning. It's not really here. So I can see how this could work out, but I'm not sure that it would work out. For example, waivers are allowed. So people would say, well, I'm going to, you know, waive the parking and we're going to have the same problem that we don't have enough parking downtown. But I'm going to focus myself really on what do you mean is subdivision three? Those are the areas that are really impinging on the residential area, which I represent. That's the west side of Kendrick Park. I see the stripes there above Coles. I see them going right into North Prospect, North Prospect Street, which looks like it'll be just a little cut-off strip of houses next to, I don't know what, but and then I see it go down further. So I'm really curious to know what the third subdivision would be. Thank you.
And I don't know if anyone wants to answer. Okay, so Hilda, I believe you can speak, introduce yourself. Or did she?
Oh, she can't.
Okay.
Well done.
She did have her hand up. It's down, oh yeah, no, it's still up. Go ahead.
Hilda?
Can she allow to talk? Okay, there we go. I think she's.
Now I got it. Okay. Basically, I was going to try to shut up, but you know me.
You're doing it. So state your name and your address.
Hold the Greenbaum 298 Montague Road.
Thank you.
I have been to most of the hearings. I have read all of the literature. And at the meeting, I want to say that Janet and Dottie have very much put their finger on all of my issues. The interview list really shocked me because it was so biased, left out most of the people who know what's going on downtown. And in any event, I, I just want to say that I want to refute what the develop, what the consultant said about picking the downtown because I sat at that meeting around one of the tables with the former chairman of the planning board. We're members of the Chamber of Commerce with one of the big developers in that neighborhood. Nobody at that table wanted it downtown. Nobody. And that seemed to be the impression that I got from, from reading also the interview letters, that the downtown was sort of, you know, not really on the radar. And it looked like Beacon wanted to have it really badly up here in North Amherst, which wouldn't have thrown me either, but I think it, it would have been a better idea if you really wanted to develop some housing. One of the things that concerned me a lot by listening into the chamber and the bid discussion Monday night, and again, that it shows up in, in, in the bylaw that you guys have written, is getting rid of the design review board. And if you're getting rid of the whole zoning bylaw by a developer accepting the 40R in its place, then it looks like the historic, local historic district commission and the regulations for the historic district also go down the drain. I'm very concerned about that. The one of the other things that bothered me is the fact mixed use building and have zero to forty nine percent commercial. Well, that brings up a whole can of worms, too. And I wanted to say, the reason we got the design review board working very hard in town meeting was because of Amherst Savings Bank excrements right at the center of town. Tore down nice little brick strip buildings to put up that ugly bank, which was stuck with in perpetuity. So that's why we have a design review board, even though they're not taken very seriously. Okay, so getting back to the whole commercial aspect. Since the new buildings were built downtown, I have very little reason to go downtown because it seems to me my kids counted it. There are twenty one Chinese restaurants. There are bars. Now we've got economic development and marijuana. The only thing I decided I go down for is my bagel fix. Or I go down and get my hair done when you can, but that's often, and that and the cinema. But I mean, basically, in the olden days, we had Matthew Shoes. We had Ann August. We had Walshes. There was a reason to go downtown and go shopping. There doesn't seem to be a reason anymore. And if we're gonna fill up the downtown with residential, there seems to be, what are we gonna get? More Chinese restaurant, more pizza, more bars, more marijuana? So I think that this has to be looked at more carefully, encourage more commercial. I know that the square footage is gonna be very expensive for commercial in new buildings because of the stretch code and the building codes, et cetera, et cetera. But when we got one East Pleasant Street, we lost to Carrot Shops. And I used to frequent Creative Needle. I used to frequent the, the the music store to buy violin strings of music for my kids. And it doesn't, you know, we've lost all this. And I don't see it coming back unless somebody makes a real effort to uncover something other than restaurants, bars, and marijuana for economic development. So now I've said my piece.
Thank you. I'm going to go, move to Rob Crowner. Pam, can we enable him? Introduce yourself and state your address.
Rob Crowner, 44 Spalding Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about this proposal. It's, it's something that I've been looking forward to for a long time. Rezoning downtown and not, not focusing just on the, the general business parts, but, but the outlying parts, including the limited business parts and, and even some general residence parts. I think it's important. The downtown hasn't really, you know, it hasn't worked like it, like it could because it's, it's too constricted. So I'm spreading it out a little bit. Makes a lot of sense. I like how the proposal makes several zones and it steps, it steps the density back towards the residential areas. I think the, the, where the lines are drawn for the subdistributes seem right to me. I'm not really sure what Maureen was getting at. I think they look right to me. And I think, I think they're also important because there's an opportunity to to develop across subdistributes where you have a larger billing that, that actually becomes smaller towards the back. And so it's important to have these subdistributes. I also want to point to in specifically the RG zones on the west side of, of North Pleasant Street that Pam was talking about. Right now, the, the, the middle part there, not, not the one a little farther down. The middle part. Yeah, that one, there's, there's already an apartment complex there. So zoning doesn't mean that something's going to happen. It just provides an opportunity for, for something to happen. And if that, if that apartment complex were to be redeveloped, I think it would be great if it were redeveloped under 40R. And, and, and the the last, the bottom RG zone where the, where the church house is and the parking lots are, that's an RG zone. You can't do anything there. Except build some residential uses. But it's part of the downtown and it should be available to use for downtown type development. That, if you, if you were to rezone that according to the, to the bylaw that's been proposed, you will create an opportunity to actually build a parking garage there. And a parking garage doesn't, I don't assume will not be built by the town for a long time. But a private developer could build a parking lot there under this zoning. It can't be done now. That's an important piece of, of this proposal, I believe. So all I want to say is we go along, but I'm, I'm excited about this proposal. I think it's, I think it's, it's has a lot of the things that I've been looking for, for many years. And I hope, I hope you'll support it.
Christine, you're on mute. Yes, sorry, I was cleaning up there. Can you, I recognize Janet Keller and can you unmute her?
Yes.
Janet Keller, I believe you can speak, your name and address and your comment, please.
Thank you. Janet Keller, I live at 120 Pope Hill Road up in North Amherst. And I would like to ask that in, in attempt may made to reach out to those who attended previous meetings, particularly the December nineteen meetings. I was very surprised to hear that among those present, many of whom I know are enthusiastic about downtown development, nonetheless expressed serious concerns. And I'm not hearing them tonight. And so you can see who's out there and I can't, but I'd really like to request that you provide an opportunity for them to to, another opportunity for them to comment before this gets too locked up. I would also like to put in a plea for greater attention to the historic resources, preservation of character, and adaptive reuse and maybe preservation of some facades, even if the building behind them is going to be larger. And finally, I would like to ask Chris, I understand that I haven't seen Maureen Adams' email, but it does seem kind of a shame that she took the, the opportunity to comment. And I'm sure that was pretty taxing for her. And I wonder if you could share with us maybe her top three concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, oh, no. Ken Rosenthal, can we allow him to talk?
Janet almost said what I was going to say about Maureen's questions. This is a recording that's going to be made available to the public. You've been very kind to let all of us have our say. Maureen wanted to be heard, and that was how she was going to reach out to you and the public and the consultants. So is there some way that if you cannot read all those questions or comments, you could make them available to the public? Rather than summarize them yourself. I think she needs, her voice needs to be heard and her questions need to be heard just as she presented them. Thank you.
Thanks. So Chris, are you there? Yeah.
I, I'm happy to read Maureen's questions. She has four pages of questions, but it's rather large type, so I can read them. But I don't think that there will be an opportunity to answer them all. Would you give me permission to read them?
Is it four pages?
Yes, I said the type is pretty big. It's probably fourteen or sixteen point. Seven questions. All of the planning board members have this document and we could read them on June 3rd, but if people feel very interested in hearing them, I would be happy to read them now.
There's, I see some hands from members. If, if Janet and David could turn off their hands for a minute and I'll just add, ask the board, raise your hand if you would like them to be read tonight. Or should we read them and address them at the next meeting that this is gonna happen on June 3rd? So right now, the hands are down. So if, if anyone wants feels strong, I just want to see if we can at least get a simple quorum. And I just want to remind everybody, we're three hours and forty five minutes into the meeting. I only see one member raising their hand. So Chris, at this point, I, you know, I it's, that's a long, if it was one or two pages, maybe. And, yeah. I'm checking hands again. Yeah, all right. I, I one more hand went up, but is there any I mean, Chris, you've read through them. Are there, are these different questions than what we've heard or?
Won't, won't these, the, the emails that are sent in are made a part of the public record? So they're, they're, they're readable by any, by the public, are they not?
Yeah, well, we all got them. So it's part, well, Chris, how is this gonna happen right now? So it wasn't part of our packet, but it did get emailed to us.
Yeah, you know what? It seems like we're spending a lot of time talking about them. So why don't I just read them quickly?
Okay.
I need to go. This is a four hour meeting. It's really
Yeah, I, I think it's Chris, can we, can you post them tomorrow somewhere? And and I, I'll say to, you know, Ms. Adams and, and everyone else that, you know, now I, I see this is really important. I saw it came in today. I will read it tonight. I'm sure we will all read it and we will think about it. And these, all of her issues will be considered and we will continue this dialogue and more feedback from people. Like what I kept hearing there is people really want to be assured that people are contacted about this meeting, that they know it's there, that they can watch, and all this is going to be put on the web so people can read. I mean, I, we're such at the beginning of this right now. Like, we're not voting on anything. Like, we're just learning about it. I know I'm learning a lot about 40R. I didn't know. So Chris, if there's a place you can post them, where would that go? On the planning board or the?
We would put them on the place where the rest of the material about this 40R district is. I think Nate said earlier that it's posted on the Housing Trust website, but there's also a link to it from the planning
Okay.
Board or the Planning Department. Nate, if Nate is still here, maybe he can answer that. Yeah, I don't know. Nate, are you there? So anyway, and there is
Yeah, we could, you know, we could try to get documents up and you know, I thought there was a webpage under the planning, planning department and we can try to link to it from a few way, different ways, just so people can find it easily. And maybe we could put it in the news again. So that it becomes just a, you know, a, you know, it's one of those items on the front just for, for a bit. So yeah, I think there's, you know, we can look at how to organize that material in a way that it's, it's, you know, people can find it.
Can you put, like, yeah, have a comment section? Because we got other people's comments, too. I don't want to put somebody's more head than others. We got a lot of comments and we can't talk about them all.
No, agreed. Yeah, I think we could, you know, we already have the other presentations. We could put all the other, all the presentations and all the comments received. So people can just click and download a PDF of comments.
Could that happen, you think, within the next week or something?
Sure.
That would be great. We really appreciate it. And, you know, we want to keep the information and transparency out there. Okay, so I, I think we need to end this for tonight. And I, I want to, first off, I want to thank the consultants for coming. This is a lot of information for a lot of people. It's, you know, we're learning new things and there's a lot to digest. And thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it. I'm just checking hands here. So at this point, Chris, we're thinking it will come back June 3rd and you'll receive comments from us on the 27th. And in our comments, we can also comment on comments that we've read, you know, that, from other people and affirm them or stress. Okay. All right. So if it's all right with everyone, we're gonna move ahead to old business, item five. Is there anything under that, Chris?
I don't think so. Nope. Unless you you had asked me to report on the CRC meeting, but I don't know if you want me to do that. Is that old business? I could just quickly say the CRC, their meeting on the 5th discussed zoning bylaw revisions and the process by which we would do zoning bylaw revisions and who might be involved in various bodies that might be formed or existing bodies that might do that work. And I could probably write up some notes and circulate them.
I assume CRC will be doing minutes from that, their meeting, right? Could you send that out to us when their minutes come out? Yeah. And there was nothing firm that came out of them at the CRC, because I was there and I think Janet was there. We watched it and it was you know, it's just a lot of discussion right now. They've got a lot of things they're thinking about, but there was nothing firm that was coming to us yet. But when they have something firm, they'll be sending us information. Thanks, Chris. So item six, new business?
No new business.
Okay. Item seven, Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
No A and Rs.
Eight is upcoming ZBA applications?
Pam might have some, but the only one I can think of right now is the Colonial Village Playground. I think I might have told you about that last week. They received, they are going to receive some used equipment from North Village and install it in the backyards of some of those buildings at North Village, I mean, at Colonial Village. And they're going through the ZBA to have that approved.
Oh, I don't know if we had heard about that, but okay. Thank you.
No.
Number nine, upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
These are some I might have also talked to you about. We are on the verge of receiving an application, site plan review application from Amherst Media to build a new building on Main Street at the corner of Main and Gray. That should be coming in. I have part of the application, but I don't have the drawings. We received an application from Russ Wilson to build a three season porch on a house at 11 Vista Terrace, which is the Applebrook, Applebrook Cluster Subdivision. And All About Learning wants to expand its playground. I think I might have told you about those last two the other day, last week.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item 10, report of the chair. I have none. Number 11, report of staff.
Thank you very much for attending the meeting in this unusual way and for sticking with us for the last several hours. We appreciate it and thank you to the consultants. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, everyone. So if there's a motion to adjourn the meeting, if someone wants to raise their hand and someone else raise it to second it. Hello, anyone awake? Raise some hands. Do you want to go home? Oh, you are home. Doug and Michael. Great. So I saw Doug's first adjournment, Michael's second. All right, I think we're all in favor. Thank you, everyone. You know, we're still making our way through this, this new Zoom. Thank you, everyone. You know, we're still making our way through this, this new Zoom world here, but I think we're doing a great job. I'll see y'all in a couple of weeks. Take care of yourselves. Stay well. Christine and Christine and Pam and Nate and all, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.